Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, March 30th, 2016. The meeting is now called to order. Please take a moment to silence your devices, and if you can, please scoot a little closer in your seats to make room for others that might be standing behind you. Thank you. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Commissioner Hudes?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Vice Chair Kane?
Here.
Chair Badami?
Here.
And I would note for the record that Commissioner Birch is recused because she's within 500 feet of the project.
Would everyone please stand and join Commissioner Hudes as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages public participation in the public process with verbal and written comments. We duly note your strong participation this evening by attendance and number of speaker cards. The commissioners will be listening to your comments, all of them, and we will be taking copious notes. To speak on the North Forty Phase One application or unrelated topic, please complete a speaker's card located within the benches and follow the instructions on the back of the card. Matters relating to the North Forty Phase One application will be heard during the itemized public hearing. Matters not relating to the North Forty application will be heard under verbal communications. Due to the number of speaker cards, your name may not be called this evening. If so, you will have the opportunity to speak at a continued hearing date. We hope to hear from all of you tonight. We have desk items this evening. Have commissioners had an opportunity to read the correspondence?
No.
No?
No, I've read 300 letters. I didn't know we were going to get another 200 this morning. I got through maybe 125 of them. I expect... I expect the matter to be continued, and I will certainly have those readers read by that time.
All right. I would imagine you got a pretty good flavor from the ones that you already received?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. We do not have any requested continuances this evening. However, I am moving on to our subcommittee reports. So in addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members also serve on various subcommittees throughout the town. Have there been any recent meetings where commissioners can share a report? Seeing none, I will move on to verbal communications. I have three speaker cards, four, and verbal communications is for speech that's unrelated to the North Forty application. So I will be calling Shannon Susick, and you will have three minutes.
There's some other ones I could...
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration and service. We appreciate your efforts and the fact that this is a fairly new commission that's also facing some of the largest and/or most controversial proposed developments in the town's history. We know that due to the past sins of prior commissions that you are sometimes blamed for past, current, and unfinished projects. I think I speak for many residents when I say that we have allowed developers to do whatever they want and what is most profitable for them in the past 10 years without true consideration for the residents and the overall effect on the entire town. Many residents feel that if an application comes before the commission as one thing, and then it turns into something else by the end of the development. A lot of these projects have forever changed the landscape of our town. Planning from pressure or fear doesn't have to continue. Fear that our coffers won't refill, fear that a developer might abandon a project, or fear that other communities will surpass us. Some of this fear came from recessions, lack of planning, and other factors, but some also from not believing and trusting in the value of our land and our community and not valuing the land the way we should. There are cycles and downturns, but if you maintain what makes this town amazing and adhere to our principles and general plan, there should be no fear at all. Thankfully, the commission has demonstrated in the past few months that they, like the town and residents, have had enough, and it's time to stand united for the town that we love. For this, we commend you. Plans, guidelines, zoning must be followed, and above all, there must be transparency and consistency in the process. It's important for those in the community not only to feel that they have a voice, but that their voice will be heard and is valued. We hope that the commission can reassure the residents of Los Gatos that they are being heard because you have the authority and the discretion to ensure that zoning, codes, and guidelines are followed. You are the guardians of our land and our most precious resources. Resources, excuse me. You have a staff that's here to serve you and provide you objective data to support your decisions. Again, thank you so much for your service, and let's plan with pride. Pride in our land, pride in our people, our natural resources, and with the absolute certainty that what we have will always be valued and in demand if we protect it. Thank you. Ms. Susick, I did call your name, but if you could just state your name for the record and your address?
Shannon Susick, sorry. 16407 Shady Beulane.
Thank you very much. We were clapping earlier, so I just want to clear the air here that if you could refrain from activities such as booing, hissing, cheering, clapping, we want everyone to feel comfortable tonight participating in the public process regardless of opinion. So thank you. Our next speaker will be Jack Van Nada.
Good evening. Jack Van Nada, 165 Euclid. I have a prepared speech that's on my phone that's very difficult to read, so I'm going to ad lib it tonight. I am currently serving on a ad hoc committee on taxes, and the purpose of the taxes is to build a consistent recurring revenue source for the town to build infrastructure. During the meeting, one of the things that occurred to me along with the North Forty is that the town has no kitty or no fund building should another North Forty or should another piece of property become available to us in the future. For instance, the Los Gatos Lodge is coming up that could be even more, well, at least as impactful as the North Forty because it's in such a small space and such a small intersection for the entrance of Highway 17. But what I would like the people here tonight to do is to think about a source of revenues, whether it's fundraising, which I think is a grievous project, or taxing ourselves, which is probably more equitable across the board, whether it's in some kind of sales tax, some kind of transit occupancy tax, or a utility tax. But build it over a period of time so that if we have opportunities to buy public property in the future, that we have the money to do that. I also advocated at the last council meeting that we have four properties in town that the town currently owns, and rather than sell those off, I advocate that the town keep those. I call them small islands of repose. They're in different locations across town. They may be used to make a small park for that neighborhood, a meeting place, or they may be used to barter for another piece of property that is close to a park so that that other park could expand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Nada. Our next speaker will be Maria Risto.
Hi, Maria Risto, 85 Broadway. I was formerly on the Housing Element Advisory Board, and I'm presently on the Transportation and Parking Commission and the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. In that light, I can appreciate how really hard the Planning Commission works. Each of you commissioners have put so much time and energy into all of the decisions you make that I commend you. I'd like to take this opportunity to say it's fantastic to see so many people engaged in a town process and attending this Planning Commission meeting. There's always something that brings further engagement, an issue, policy, concern, opportunity, event. I certainly wish we had this level of interest at the Housing Element Advisory Board and the North Forty specific plan meetings in the last few years. Reading next door, it appears many residents are unaware of the years and hours of meetings by various commissions and committees, many of which dealt with the myriad issues that led to decisions that brought us here tonight. The General Plan Committee, the Housing Element Advisory Board, the North Forty Specific Plan Committee, and the Planning Commission were all part of this process. They are comprised of residents of Los Gatos who apply for and are appointed by the Town Council as volunteers to serve on commissions, boards, and committees. The agendas for these meetings are posted publicly on the town website. The meetings are open to the public, public comment is accepted in writing and orally, and the minutes are publicly available. Commissioners work hard to prepare for each meeting, request information from town staff, engage in thoughtful discussions, and often make difficult decisions. Most decisions weigh a variety of factors and all strive to reach the best outcome for the town. Commissioners are not paid. Like the Town Council members, they have jobs, families, and a variety of other obligations, just like everyone else sitting here. Residents serve on commissions for similar reasons. We love our town, we want to make a difference, we are willing to ask questions, listen, weigh facts and opinions, and make decisions. My hope is that the widespread participation tonight is a spark that brings more residents into the town processes in a meaningful, constructive, and continuous way. I encourage everyone here to consider applying to a town commission, committee, or board next November, or run for a school board, or the Town Council, or possibly start attending or streaming several of these meetings, listening to every one of the agenda items, reading the staff reports, and asking yourself, "How would I decide each and every one of these issues?" The people sitting up here in these chairs make decisions at least twice a month on every single issue before them and understand that these decisions, large and small, affect their neighbors' lives and the future direction of our town. I can tell you, the volunteer residents who sit on the town commissions care deeply about Los Gatos and its future. They care at least as much as anyone else sitting here does. They understand that yes or no are just the start, and large issues have lots of moving parts, implications, and consequences.
Thank you, Ms. Risto. We appreciate your comments. Our next speaker will be John Shepperson.
So the question presented is, should Los Gatos conduct...
Mr. Shepperson, please state your name and address for the record.
Apologize, I'm a little nervous. 120 Oak Rim in Los Gatos.
Thank you.
So a question presented, should Los Gatos conduct a comprehensive third-party review of its police department to say potentially $7.5 million annually, or $150 million over 20 years, or $450 million over 50 years? And if we had started this kind of long-term thinking maybe 20 or 30 years ago, we could have bought and held pieces of property that we don't presently have. So yes, the $15 million big police budget is, and I know it's a harsh word, but it's a cancer on the health of the town. Whether we keep our police department or go with the sheriff is secondary. The priority is reforming the budget. A third-party review of our town and police budget is necessary to save the town from becoming a city. Presently, we overspend on policing, making us financially dependent on big commercial projects, which will continue if unchecked, causing state-mandated housing. The process will cause greater city-like traffic, city-like buildings, and city-like character. If you want a city, don't do anything. Don't call for budget reform. Support the big police budget equals a city in Los Gatos. So that's basically summing it up. The big police budget equals city of Los Gatos. I call it the Big Short. Los Gatos's huge decline in Netflix sales tax revenue from about 40% to, I think, about 8% has impacted the town. We have loss of car dealerships, the big police budget, and an increase in Calpers is causing unmet needs to go unmet, and we risk serious financial problems when the next recession hits. So this is the budget. New York Police Department, Cupertino's 20%, Saratoga 27%, ours is 42% of the budget. What we could do with those millions, we need to pay down the $54 million in unfunded employment liabilities. We could fix the roads. 20% of our roads are now in poor or very poor condition. That's a problem right now, and we don't have the money, except for we've raised it 3% for Almond Grove. We could build downtown garages to help the tenants make money. So this is a picture of the traffic, Los Gatos High School. Danville recognizes the problem of traffic congestion. They have a traffic's bus program, which reduces traffic by 30%. It speaks for itself. We could use monies for a senior community center, the savings, forming art center, that's the Almond Grove, legal liability, Netflix. When we, when big, well, I have to leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Shepperson.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comments. Would anybody else in the audience like to speak to us on a matter not related to the North Forty? Going, going, gone. All right. Item number one is our consent calendar. Typically, we have minutes to approve, but we do not have any minutes tonight, so we will move along to our continued public hearing, which is item number two. Item number two is our North Forty Phase One Architecture and Site Applications S-13-090, Vesting Tentative Map M-13-014. Requesting approval for the construction of a new multi-use, multi-story development consisting of 320 residential units, which includes 50 affordable senior units, approximately 66,800 square feet of commercial floor area, which includes a market hall, onsite and offsite improvements, and a vesting tentative map. APNs 424-07-024 through 027, 031 through 037, 080, I'm sorry, 070, 083 through 086, I'm seeing a lot of numbers here, 090 and 100. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Are there any disclosures from commissioners? Commissioner Hudes?
I had incidental conversation when I did the site visit. Also, I served on several committees prior to this, including the North Forty Advisory, the General Plan Committee, and the Housing Advisory Committee. I'm trying to put that out of my mind as we go into this next phase, but I wanted to disclose.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Hudes. I had incidental contact with the applicant during a site visit and prior town hall meetings. I also had coincidental contact with Mr. Caprobes while walking my dog past his residence. And, Commissioner Hansen?
Like Commissioner Hudes, I also had incidental contact with the applicant when we did our walkthrough of the site. I did not serve on previous North Forty committees, however.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kane?
Incidental contact means we talked to them and asked them questions?
I'll ask the town attorney what his interpretation of that is.
Incidental contact, and your rules and regulations say it's incidental, minor talking with an applicant or other parties, that in no way is not included in your staff report or in other documentation that is outside. So in other words, you did not receive any information that is not currently in your package or in any of the information that's been provided you, any information that's outside of that and is not privy to anybody else, is not incidental contact and should be declared.
I'm going to presume I did not have incidental contact.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kane. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I think the record should be clear that all of us were given the opportunity, and no more than, I think, two, certainly three, I guess would be max, to tour the property within the last week, which we did, and we had one or two people walking with us to show us the story poles and that kind of, that to all of us, I think, was incidental. We just got to see what we've been reading about. But I think almost all of us, if not all of us, did that.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell, for that clarification. In advance of staff's presentation, I will emphasize that we have a large number of speakers present. We would like to take advantage of accommodating as many of you as possible tonight. We are here as a community to gather and process information. The commissioners will take this into consideration with our preliminary questions of staff and the applicant. I'm looking for Ms. Mosley. Are you ready to provide us with a staff report?
I am. Good evening. As you all are aware, there's a lot of information in front of you, so there's a lot of stuff that we could talk about tonight, so I'm going to keep to the big items and help frame that discussion for you tonight, and obviously, we'll get into some questions that falls in between those pieces. The development of the North Forty has been a topic of discussion off and on for the last 20 years. A specific plan was drafted in 1999 and never adopted. The town's 2020 general plan included a requirement that a North Forty specific plan be drafted, and as a result, the council appointed the North Forty Advisory Committee in May of 2011. The committee's role was to provide direction and guidance to town staff and the town's consultant in drafting the specific plan. A specific plan is used by jurisdictions to implement their general plan within a particular geographical area. A specific plan provides more detailed land use and development guidelines as it relates to that specific area. The advisory committee met 20 times between May 11, May of 2011, and August of 2013. Their work included interaction with the community and staff in preparing a draft that met the direction of the goals and policies within the general plan. These documents were considered and revised in a dozen public hearing meetings by the Planning Commission and the council between 2013 and 2015. The specific plan and the certified EIR for the North Forty specific plan set parameters and studied the impacts of the maximum development capacity contained within the specific plan. The town's housing element, which is usually included in the adopted general plan, was not completed until May of 2015. The delay was due in part to difficulties in designating the necessary Rena sites within the town. The adopted housing element includes the assumption that 13.5 acres of the North Forty will be developed at 20 acres per unit. Anything less than that would require revision to the town's housing element with additional sites designated at 20 units per acre to replace those units not provided within the North Forty. So while the specific plan permits a maximum of 270 units, provision of all these units is required at 20 units per acre in order to comply with the town's adopted housing element. Providing these units at a lower density, for example, spread throughout the specific plan area, would not meet the requirements of the town's adopted housing element. The applicant's proposal tonight includes a density bonus request. The state's density bonus law is one of several California statutes designed to implement an important state policy to promote the construction of low-income housing and to remove impediments to providing low-income housing. When the legislature adopted the state density bonus law, its purpose was to address the housing shortage crisis and require local governments to provide the necessary increased housing stock by reducing local discretion that would impede this provision. The density bonus law applies to all cities and towns. It requires cities and towns to adopt an ordinance that specifies how local compliance with the statute will be implemented. As such, the town adopted a state-mandated density bonus ordinance in 2012. The ordinance was intended to comply with the state's ordinance and its requirements. If requested, the ordinance requires that unless specific findings can be made to deny the density bonus, the bonus and up to three concessions must be granted. The proposed application includes 50 affordable senior rental units, 49 of which would be very low and extremely low-income units, which is defined as 30% to 50% of the median income of Santa Clara County, as well as one manager unit that would be available to moderate-rate income category. The senior units would be constructed and operated by Eden Housing, which is a local provider that owns and or manages more than 100 properties in the San Francisco Bay area. The proposed number of very low-income units is in excess of 11% of the base units, which qualifies the applicant to a 35% density bonus, which would be an additional 83 units. The commission must grant the density bonus unless the required findings for denial can be made. Along with the provision of up to three concessions, the town is additionally precluded from imposing a development standard that would preclude the applicant from developing the density or number of units permitted by the bonus. The applicant has not requested any concessions, but has requested a waiver from two development standards included in the specific plan. One is the definition of height, which specifies that the height should be measured from existing or proposed grade, whichever is lower, and the second is the allowance for additional height for the mixed-use, affordable building, from 45 feet to approximately 51 feet. The commission must grant these waivers unless the findings for denial can be made. The proposed applications before you tonight include an architecture and site application for development of 320 residential units and 66,791 square feet of commercial area. 252 of the residential units are proposed to be constructed by Summer Hill Homes and would consist of three different types of units: traditional row homes, ranging from five to seven units per building; garden clusters, which range from five to eight units per cluster; and the condominium clusters, which each have 16 units. The units range in size from approximately 900 square feet to just under 2,000 square feet and have from one to three bedrooms. The one-bedroom units are required to provide a minimum of one parking space per unit, while the two- and three-bedroom units are required to provide two parking spaces per unit. Additionally, the specific plan requires that each unit provide an additional half-space for guests. Each of the units, as proposed, has a single or two-car garage depending on the number of bedrooms proposed. The commercial component of the application includes 66,791 gross square feet of commercial area, and approximately 20,000 square feet of that space is intended to provide for market hall use, which is a grouping of artisan or specialty retailers that together function like a community grocery store, kind of like a continual farmer's market. The applicant will speak further to this and how they will be promoting local businesses through this use. The remaining space is split up between restaurant space and neighborhood-serving retail and service uses. The applicant is also requesting approval of the vesting tentative map, which includes 113 lots with up to 320 residential condominiums. As many of you understand, the specific plan and the certified EIR have provided some assumptions that limit the purview of the decision-makers on these applications. For example, the EIR studied the impact on local resources like water, schools, and parks, as well as services like fire and police, and concluded that the development assumed within the specific plan would not impact existing services and resources. Additionally, the EIR studied the traffic associated with the full build-out of the specific plan and determined that the required mitigation measures in place at full build-out of the North Forty specific plan area, town roadways and intersections would continue to operate within town standards. As part of the Phase One review process, staff facilitated the preparation of an initial study to determine compliance with the certified EIR. The traffic associated with the Phase One development is in compliance with the parameters studied and assumed within the specific plan and the certified EIR. So while there continues to be a lot of discussion regarding traffic associated with the development, as proposed, the traffic will not exceed the levels studied and approved within the specific plan. While the density bonus is required by state law and must be granted unless the required findings can be made, the commission can discuss reducing the base number of units on which the density bonus is granted with the understanding that the ramifications of that would require modification of the town's housing element. As discussed earlier, the housing element assumed development at 20 units per acre. Below that threshold, the development would no longer qualify for the assumptions included in the housing element. Additionally, the commission could discuss the provision of the BMP units in regards to the town's BMP ordinance and program guidelines. However, state law precludes the ability to provide senior-designated units dispersed as traditionally required by the town's BMP guidelines. So if the units were required to be dispersed, they would no longer be able to be designated for seniors or be provided at the very low-income or extremely low-income categories, excuse me, which are categories that the town currently has very limited inventory of. The main areas for the commission to discuss tonight are more subjective and relate to how the application accomplishes the look and feel of Los Gatos, how the agrarian feel and history of the site have been captured with the proposed plans, additionally, whether the open space and architectural styling meet the intent of the direction provided in the specific plan. Usually, we would refer to the town's residential design guidelines or the commercial design guidelines, but the relevant sections of these documents were used to frame the development standards included in the specific plan, and as such, all comments and direction... all comments and direction should be in relation to what is contained in the approved specific plan. The goal of the commission this evening is to take public testimony on the proposed applications. Due to unexpected constraints with existing access and use of several of the sites that were proposed to include story polls, not all of the polls were able to be installed, and as a result, the town council at next week's council meeting will be considering a modification of the story poll exception that was granted in February. Based on this requirement, the planning commission cannot take an action at tonight's meeting, and staff recommends that the commission accept public comments and continue the application to a date certain in order to complete their discussion and provide a recommendation to the town council. This completes staff's report, but we are here for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley.
Oh, actually, let me break in. Rob did have a couple of clarifications from the legal aspect of things.
All right. The town attorney will speak. Mr. Schultz?
Yes, good evening, Chair and Commissioner. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on some of the issues that might be raised tonight and to give a little bit of clarification first. The first issue is on environmental issues, as Ms. Mosley said. The final EIR for the North Forty specific plan was approved by the town council. That EIR analyzed the environmental impacts for the North Forty specific plan. The EIR did include mitigation measures to address the potential impacts. I'm sure there, there is quite a few members of the public, as you heard from their, from their comments already, or, or their voices already. They might not agree with that, but that EIR was certified. The time to challenge that EIR has passed. So as you move forward with your deliberations on this, it's your job to review that certified EIR, to review the specific plan, and determine whether those two documents are in, are consistent or inconsistent with the application in front of you. The other issue I want to talk briefly about was school impact fees. State, state law known as SB 50 is really the law of the land. It was enacted in 1998. It mandates that if a developer agrees to pay the fees established by SB 50, the impacts on school facilities may, may not be analyzed. No minute, no mitigation for impacts on school facilities may be required, and the project may not be denied due to impacts on schools or due to inadequacy of school facilities. Therefore, SB 50 limits your ability in the town council to consider the effects of the North Forty on the ability of schools to accommodate enrollment, to require mitigation, and deny the project because they have paid or agreed to pay the SB 50 fees. And so that's, I would just want to caution you on those issues. In regards to the housing element, we have an approved certified housing element that states for the North Forty, 13.5 acres of the site shall be developed with a minimum density of 20 units per acre, and it is intended to accommodate 270 residents, and the development is by right. That was required by state, that this, this area and other areas of the, of the town be by right. And what does that mean? By right means that if the application for this development is consistent with the specific plan and with the EIR, then the project must be approved. So that's really, if you wanted what, what it is in a nutshell, and I'll use Commissioner Kane as an example, many times when you have a development review in the hillside guidelines, in the hillside area, Mr. Kane will put his hand on the hillside guidelines and say, "This is the law. You must be consistent with the law." So in this case, really, what the law is, is the specific plan and the EIR, those documents, and your job is to find out if the application, this document, is consistent with the specific plan. And if you find it's consistent with the specific plan, then you can make recommendations to that, to council. If you find it inconsistent, then we'll make findings to that extent. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Vice Chair Kane?
But I like the hillside law. And I have issues with this one as, as concerns traffic. I have, as I said earlier, read 210 letters with 100 to go, and I don't think any of them fail to voice concern, fear about children and, and existing gridlock. And, you know, I have a binary question. If, if I don't like what the EIR, and in particular, the initial study, which comes from the EIR, it says the traffic's okay. If I don't feel the traffic is okay, is there anything I can do about it?
So your job as a commissioner is to apply the law. There are many laws that you might not like, not only within our ordinance structures. The, the role then is to try to change those laws, but in this case, the specific plan has been adopted. It is the law for you to file, and it's your job to follow that law and determine if it's consistent or inconsistent. And if the project is consistent with the specific plan and the mitigation measures set forth in the EIR, then it must be approved.
So I'll take that as a no. The second question is, can town council do anything about it?
If, it can, it obviously has the authority to change laws, so it could change the specific plan, it could change its housing element, it could change its general plan at any time.
I understand SB 50-
All right, all right. Audience, I'm going to have to remind you, no, no cheering, no clapping, as much as you might want to do that, we need to respect all the speakers tonight. Thank you.
I understand SB 50 is state law.
See, they can't change state law.
And I've, I'm stuck with that, and I'm not even going to bring it up. But the traffic thing and the number of, of letters I've received, and they're passionate, somehow that needs to be addressed. If not by us, then perhaps by town council.
And certainly, what you would look at in this case is the EIR and the mitigation measures, and look how the testimony that you receive from the public is inconsistent with that EIR, and determine if there's any other mitigation measures above and beyond the EIR that could be established to mitigate any traffic that you perceive is not being addressed.
I just don't think 210 people can be wrong.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Kane. Commissioner Hudes?
I, since I'm kind of new to this, and this is the first time I'm seeing a specific plan, could you clarify what prevails? We have a specific plan, there's a general plan, and you also said that there are other housing guidelines that fed into those documents, but particularly, what is our job relative to the specific plan and the general plan, which I understand is, is sort of the law of Los Gatos?
So, so when we adopted the specific plan, we also made amendments to the general plan to make those two documents consistent. So they should remain consistent throughout both of them, but the specific plan is the document, which is the law of the land, that you need to look at to determine whether this is consistent or not.
And if there is an inconsistency between those documents, what, what prevails?
The specific, the specific plan should be the document that prevails in that case.
Does that answer your question? Commissioner Hudes?
Yes.
Commissioner Hansen?
Uh, thank you for your report, Marnie. That was very helpful. I had a question about the density bonus. I sat on the housing element advisory board, and when we looked at the potential sites for affordable housing, which was required in the housing element, one of the things we did in our exercises is looked at not only the amount of units, but what could happen in terms of total units because of the state density bonus. So my question is, I do remember when we were having these discussions, the original plan was for around 360 units. I don't remember the exact number, but that was cut back by town council. My question is, in the discussions that town council did to arrive at the final 270 units, did they consider the impact of the density bonus? Because that, that's the real number to look at, because we don't have a choice about the state density bonus. And, and it would be hard to find against it.
Yes, as I understand it, the, the council did basically backtrack the math to the 270. The EIR studied 364 units, which would assume a 35% density bonus for those, for the full 270 units.
Commissioner Erickson?
So, this is a question for Mr. Schultz. So, while I fully understand Senate Bill 50, as you know, one of, the fourth guiding principle in the specific plan says, in part, the North Forty will minimize or mitigate impacts to, on schools. I left out the other two. So what's the relationship between that guiding principle and the requirements of Senate Bill 50?
So even though Senate Bill 50 really just tied your hands on the ability to obtain full, full mitigation from school districts, and going back to the history of SB 50, it was basically enacted because many cities and towns were denying development based on school overcrowding. So it is the only mechanism we have to collect, but there was nothing restraining us from at least making that language to encourage and to require as much mitigation as possible. And one of the ways that incurred was, is the applicant saw that language in the specific plan and negotiated directly with the school district for further mitigation above and beyond SB 50, but we had no legal requirement to require anything more than SB 50 fees.
Vice Chair Kane, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Kane?
So with respect to this SB 50 mitigation, you mentioned earlier, it was a monetary association with school impact that responsible parties had to pay, or-
Yeah, it's a formula that's based on-
And the intent for that was to, the mitigation could take the form of finding a site for an additional school as necessary. My question is, are responsible parties looking for such a site?
I don't know that. That would be the school district that would be looking for it, or the applicant. So we're not part, we're not a party to the agreement between the school district and the applicant.
If there's a school representative here tonight, would SB 50 preclude me from later asking that question?
No.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hudes?
I have a question about notification and story polls. Is the notification to residents and are the story polls in compliance with the town's ordinance and the council's direction?
So the applicant requested, started with the story poll discussion. The applicant requested a exception to the standard story poll requirements within our story poll policy, based on existing use of various pieces of the property of, of the overall project area. The council approved that, and the applicant intended on implementing that. What wasn't anticipated was the level of guy wires and safety supports that were going to be required adjacent to some of the existing residential and commercial uses. So some of those story polls were not able to be fully completed, and the applicant is pursuing clarification, or an additional modification of that exception at next week's council meeting. As far as the notification, we did notify, we, we, we did the required newspaper postings, as well as notified above and beyond the 300-foot. I don't know how far it went. We established a boundary within, when we started the specific plan process, and I believe that includes about 1,000, somewhere between 500 and 1,000 notices.
Okay. So is it fair to say that it's not in compliance now, but it will be in the future?
They will, they will be required to comply with whatever council determines at next week's meeting.
And will the public have an opportunity to, to speak about what they see when the story polls are fully compliant?
So the applicant is requesting that the council consider what is in place at this time. If the council requests additional polls be put in, then we would have to discuss what that looks like and whether it merits additional discussion.
And one, one more question about story polls. Were there story polls erected as part of the development of the specific plan? In other words, was there an opportunity for the community to see what this specific plan might look like and, and express their views?
I don't know the answer to that. I believe the applicant will be able to speak to that when they come up.
The town attorney is shaking his head no.
There were no story polls required for the specific plan?
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Because there was no specific project?
Any further questions? All right. We will now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing and allow the applicant and their team 10 minutes to address the And as you speak, please be sure to state your name for the record.
Great. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, community members and staff. I'm Wendy Baker with Summer Hill Homes, and tonight, myself, Andrea Osgood with Eden Housing, and Don Capobres with Grosvenor will share our eight years of community engagement and progress. The North Forty has been a part of the town process for nearly three decades. When the North Forty specific plan was approved last summer, the final planning phase began with our project application. The town's vision has been clear and the process public and transparent. While we recognize that the draft specific plan's evolution would modify our proposal, we wanted to provide visual context for the public to see how the specific plan translated into a development proposal. So in 2013, we submitted an application. During this process, we held over 100 community meetings. We significantly modified and resubmitted our architecture and site review application and tentative map, based on both the community input from these meetings, as well as the changes in the approved specific plan. We have also participated in the town's thorough process, including two CDAC meetings, the Historic Preservation Committee, and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We constructed story polls, created a built-to-scale model, hosted a community open house, and have made ourselves available to meet with anyone interested or who had questions. We recognize the challenges, which we have never shied away from. Rather, we have focused on effective solutions. First, traffic. Not only will we resolve some of the existing deficiencies, but equally important, we have designed to encourage people to get out of their cars. With the first phase of the North Forty project, we will spend over $10 million in off-site improvements. This is unprecedented in Los Gatos, and we propose to construct these improvements first. This project not only meets EIR's mitigation requirements, it then goes many steps further to implement real functional lane changes along Lark, the Highway 17 on-ramp, and Los Gatos Boulevard. We are dedicating private property to enable many of these improvements. Going beyond the car, connectivity to the town through transit, bicycle, and pedestrian improvements is key and forward-thinking as the town develops its master bicycle trails plan. When challenged in a neighborhood meeting to resolve connectivity not only within, but outside our project boundaries, we worked with the town engineering staff, VTA, Caltrans, Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, and community members to design bicycle lanes from the North Forty to the Los Gatos Creek Trail, which will safely connect the North Forty to downtown, Netflix, and beyond the town boundaries. We propose multi-use paths along our property frontage, as well as throughout the project. And thanks to our partnership with Downtown Summit Bicycles, we are also including bicycle tuning stations and part-vending services. We designed our residential program to satisfy both the town's housing element requirements and the residential unmet needs as identified in the specific plan. The Fair Housing Act does not permit discrimination of any types, including families. So while we designed our residential program to meet the needs and tastes of seniors and millennials, a lingering question from the community about impact to schools always remained. After many years of conversations, we entered into an unprecedented voluntary agreement with the school district to acquire or enable acquisition of land for facilities expansion. This is in addition to the legally mandated mitigation fees, our significantly lower bedroom count, and our design features intended to attract a millennial buyer. The North Forty also achieves the minimum density required to satisfy the town's housing element. After lengthy public process, the North Forty was chosen as a significant way to satisfy the state's requirements. Phase One will satisfy 237 of the 270 units identified to be developed on the North Forty. Focus groups assisted our design process on what a millennial wants in a condominium. The For Sale Program proposes agrarian architecture with three distinct product types, including 19 different floor plans, starting at 900 square feet. We have addressed all architecture comments from staff, the town's outside consulting architect, and CDAC during our application process.
Hello, Andrea Osgood. The senior affordable housing building represents Eden Housing's collaboration with Grosvenor and Summer Hill Homes to meet the requirements of the town's BMP program. By delivering these units in a standalone building, we are able to restrict to households age 62 and older. As well, the standalone building allows us to put together a financing program that allows us to target these units at much deeper affordability levels than is required by the BMP program. Our building is located in the heart of the district, above the market hall, and will be an exciting and engaging location for our seniors.
Don Capobres, a really smart-
As required by the specific plan, we've commissioned an economic analysis of the impact of our retail proposal on downtown. This report was presented to the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee. Tim Kelly, President of Kaiser Marston, is here tonight to address the report. The conclusion is that there is significant unmet retail and restaurant demand in the market area for the North Forty and for downtown, and this demand is expected to grow significantly through 2020. The North Forty is well-positioned on the north end of town to service employment growth at Roku, Netflix, and Good Samaritan. The question is, why let this unmet demand continue to be absorbed in Campbell or Willow Glen or other parts of South San Jose? Market Hall has been a part of Grosvenor's vision on the North Forty since about 2009 and 2010. One of the questions raised at Conceptual Development Advisory Committee was about the feasibility of Market Hall. We've done quite a bit of research on Market Hall. There are many directions that these can go. We've decided the focus of this particular Market Hall will be the celebration of the site's agricultural heritage and a showcase for some of the region's best growers. To help us program it, I'm very happy to announce that we are now working with the co-owners of downtown Los Gatos's Manresa, Manresa Bread, and the Bywater. Not only will they help us implement Market Hall correctly, but they will ensure that it is uniquely, unique Los Gatos gem. Overall, our retail offering anchored by Market Hall is a jewel for the north end of town. In the interest of time, I'm not going to go through the entire program with you, but would be happy to do that during questions and answers. Onto the agrarian inspiration in open space and meshing with our focus on the growers at Market Hall is our inspired open space program that ties the residential and commercial components of Phase One together. We are pleased that the town's Historic Preservation Committee accepted our interpretation of the historical agrarian feel of the site. We have engaged the assistance of Zach Lewis of Garden to Table to help program over two acres of productive community gardens and orchard trees that can be used for resident enjoyment, restaurant use, or provision of healthy food for our seniors. Historic Preservation Committee also raised the need to consider celebrating the history of the Yuki family. We will continue to work with the family on concepts to do this. They are immensely private, but we will find a way to pay tribute to this longtime Los Gatos family. Continuing on to the comments that we got at Conceptual Development Advisory Committee, the concept of replacing our proposed orchard trees with walnut trees was also raised. Since then, we've evaluated the pros and cons of this change. We conclude that our proposal is still probably the preferred option, but we would be happy to share the rationale for this inclusion with you during questions and answers. Finally, and to the folks in the room here, I would really like to conclude by thanking the many citizens of Los Gatos who have dedicated so much time to vet the many competing interests related to the North Forty. We are proud to have been part of this conversation for the better part of a decade now, believe it or not. We do feel confident in our ability to deliver a uniquely Los Gatos neighborhood that we all can be proud of. We've had partnerships with agencies, other community partners that we're proud of, and just being part of that conversation, and we look forward to continuing that conversation. We have quite a few members of our design team available to answer any questions that the planning commission may have. With that, I did pretty well. I ended with some time left, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Capobres. Thank you, Ms. Osgood, and thank you, Ms. Baker. Did you have more to add? No? Okay. All right, I'm going to look to the commissioners to see if they have any questions for the applicant. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I would just remind the planning commission that because of the number of public comments, you will have the ability to ask applicant any questions during the rebuttal time.
I'm just going to ask a question because I know a number of people have raised this, and so perhaps it might be a good time just to raise it, and that is, some of the letters have said, why didn't you place, why didn't you spread out the residential units? And we all know, for example, had some of the residential units been put at the other end of the property, in fact, would have been, as I understand it, in a different school district, a school district which was agreeable to that. Perhaps if you could refresh all of our recollections as to why that didn't happen.
A lot of this conversation happened over the last few years, and we're here to implement the policies outlined in the specific plan. And frankly, the specific plan calls for the residential to be primarily located in the Lark District and the Transition District, and so we're implementing the guidelines found in the specific plan. The other point to make and why you have a specific plan in this case is that there is not just one property owner on the North Forty. At one point in time, I think we've concluded that there were up to 13 or 14 property owners on the North Forty. The specific plan is put together to help those property owners work in a cohesive way as properties develop. Frankly, we don't control all the property on the North Forty to be able to implement everything that we want to, so that's another reason.
Mr. Capobres, can you explain the rationale for eliminating the walnut trees?
And I'm going to probably call on our landscape architect, Ashley Langworthy, to help me out on this. So the rationale on the walnut trees, and going back to the slide, there's two big issues. Because we aren't trying to do just notional trees out there, we're actually trying to do production trees that can be harvested. Because of how walnut trees are harvested, you have to spread them apart a little bit more. So one of the downsides, especially on Lark Avenue, which is the main setback and the main interface between us and Highland Oaks, is you have less trees because they would be spaced further apart. So you would go from 146 trees, which we proposed along Lark Avenue, to 80 total trees. The second issue that I am kind of comfortable in speaking and I'll ask Ashley to come up and fill in anything, is our understanding of what happens to the soil when you have walnut trees is there is some toxicity or chemical reaction that prohibits some of the undergrowth that we would have with the other orchard trees. So you'd be limited in what you can plant under the trees. I've exhausted my understanding of walnut trees, so I'm going to turn it to our landscape architect.
Just as one other side note, there are walnut trees proposed within the application, but we wanted to focus on a diversity of orchard trees.
I think the conversation at CEDAC was about really taking a snapshot at this current history or this current moment in time on the North Forty.
All right, thank you. No, you can go ahead.
I want to clarify the question. Is it, why aren't the existing trees going to remain? Or...
The existing walnut trees? And if you could state your name for the record as well?
Sure, Ashley Langworthy. So the existing trees have been on the site for a long time, and they're at the end of their lives, so it would not make sense in terms of longevity to keep the existing trees. We did study planting new walnut trees to keep that walnut character that is loved by many in the town. And so as Dawn expressed, there are certain issues with having walnuts, and one of the big ones is the toxicity that walnut trees leave in the soil, so there can't be anything planted beneath, or not nothing, but there are very few species that will survive under a walnut tree, and our intention is to have the orchard trees overhead and then have a planting underneath, possibly lavender or sage or some kind of herb planting, agrarian planting underneath. Another reason is that walnuts take, they have a longer period that they are bare, so just aesthetically, a lot of the other orchard trees we're considering bloom earlier in the spring. And then, as Dawn mentioned, they need to be spread further apart than many of the other species. And I think also, as Dawn said, you know, we, this is our preference as, from the design side, but I don't think it's a closed issue if that's a game changer.
Thank you for that explanation. Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I have many, many questions, but I really want to hear from the public before I reframe those questions. I have really two kind of big-picture questions about the site itself. The first one is, where is the school? And if it's not on the site, what are the considerations about the plan itself that said it shouldn't be on the site?
So a school is a land use that would be accepted with a conditional use permit in the specific plan. There's no site identified within the specific plan for a school. However, obviously, we have heard the comments about school sightings. It's very challenging on this property to place a school because of its proximity to the freeway. Okay, thank you. This is actually a very real environmental issue, and so there's a 500-foot setback that must be obtained, and so pretty much the majority of the site is not buildable for a school. And then the places where it is constructible, there's existing office buildings, for example, along Los Gatos Boulevard that were very recently built. And then the other area would be essentially the second project entrance. As far as the school and our agreement, I think the school district's here and can speak on it, but the way that this agreement was arrived at was essentially establishing the cost for acquisition of land, be it on the North Forty or beyond the North Forty, so that the school district could ultimately expand its land and therefore expand facilities. It was completely voluntary, but there was a basis behind it. I think that it wouldn't be very smart for me to talk about where we're looking at land.
Commissioner Hudes, did you have a follow-up to that?
Yes, the, and I appreciate that. I understand the challenge with the school, but I also think that it's important to look at options of locating it on the property, and so I appreciate seeing this drawing and wonder if you would provide it to us so that we can consider that as we deliberate on this.
Absolutely.
And I had another question about the site but not school.
Okay, go ahead.
So the, when I walked the site and I started looking at particularly the guiding principle that the North Forty will embrace hillside views, I was struck by the layout and the grid pattern of the North Forty, which I would characterize as north-south, east-west, rectangular grid. And when I looked at the hillsides and I looked at El Sareno and El Sombroso, they were, they did not fall north-south. Were you aware in laying this out of the location of these mountains that are very important to Los Gatos? And did you consider aligning the pattern of the site such that you could get hillside views?
Yeah, so there's a lot of history on this, and this was looked at very early on. Essentially, there are a couple of constraints on the property. Now, the hillsides, they do wrap the property, so while you're speaking of two peaks, there are hillside views that are outside of just those two peaks. So the, ultimately, there's an existing street grid network, Los Gatos Boulevard, Lark, 85, and 17, which happened to be quite lineal as well. And then there were locations that were pretty much set due to existing, again, the existing street network. You had Highland Oaks, which was desired to make some sort of, almost a four-way intersection with limited access, mind you. And then there was a midway point for, which is now Neighborhood Street on the plan, and... Oh, thank you. So there's the existing street networks. You're going to see that, you know, when you get constrained, this has already been constructed right here and right here. So you've become constrained, and so we looked at flipping the site effectively 45 degrees, like what you're speaking of, so that those views could be going towards the mountains more directly. There are a lot of challenges with doing something like that, both from an infrastructure perspective, a site visibility perspective, where the existing access, or the access points were proposed in the specific plan. So, and then the other thing is, is that when you flip a plan like that, you ultimately end up with a lot of sort of extra spaces and reaching that density that's required for the housing element, which we could have used as open spaces, but we chose to put them in different locations instead. So what we did instead was, we focused on view corridors. Again, it may not go directly to those peaks, but it does serve a view of the mountains from inside of the site. There's a 30-foot setback, this perimeter boundary, or perimeter buffer zone, and that in the specific plan is actually what is noted as being the primary view corridors, is on the actual perimeter of the site, which is why that 30-foot setback exists and why there's a 20, an additional 20 feet where there's only 25 foot of height permitted. So the first 50 feet of the site you'll see is all two-story. That was drafted in the specific plans just for the reason that you're talking about, for those hillside views. Then when you follow this pattern, we have these streets and passeos throughout the property. So if you're at this open space, or you're at this open space, you have a clear shot through those passeos or those, if you're at the demonstration garden, you can be standing here at the edge of the community garden and see the hills, or in this garden or here, or again, here going up. Sometimes your best view corridors end up being your green spaces, your passeos, and your right-of-ways.
Commissioner Hanson?
I too want to hear all the comments from the public, but I did have one conceptual question about the market rate units. In one of the earlier versions, I think before the specific plan was adopted, there was a section of the development that was going to be not senior affordable housing, but senior step-down housing. And senior housing is a well-documented need in the town of Los Gatos. When we looked at the housing element, the population has been aging in Los Gatos, and there's a need for more options for seniors. So my question is, I know you, when you made your remarks earlier, you talked about the market rate units being, you can't restrict them to one group or another because of, you know, the fair housing laws. But in reading the justification letters, there was no mention of seniors other than the senior affordable housing unit. So I'd just like to understand how the market rate units could possibly serve the unmet need of senior step-down housing.
I can start with, nowhere does it say that you have a defined percentage of unmet needs, right? And actually, millennials are the largest pool of population in the United States right now. So when you actually look at who is a big unmet need, that's a very large population. Some of the units, while they may not be designated as senior, because you can't really designate senior units, you know, throughout the property, you have to do it in one designated location, hence our senior affordable proposal. You would have to walk up one flight of stairs, but we had shown there are actual flats within these condominiums where it's single-story living. And then there's also, there's 10 market rate apartments that also have elevator access, correct? They have elevator access. So in addition to those 50 units that you see, there's 20 flats that are just all one level living, and then 10 apartments. You have another 30 units on top of that that offer that single-level living. So we are trying to accommodate for that. We can't restrict people to only be in that. And then maybe, I don't know if you want to talk about the other move-down building?
I don't like rewinding history all that much, especially on this project, and there's been a lot of history, but at one point in time, the draft specific plan allowed for a height of about 55 feet with additional open space. When that was in existence in the specific plan, we had proposed a move-down housing program, and move-down housing is single-story, no stairs, serviced by elevator, no yards. We can't say this from a Fair Housing Act perspective. I guess I'm about to get in trouble. But, you know, we're designing them for a move-down buyer and away from amenities that would typically attract families. So instead of a big yard, you'd have a big terrace. But because, you know, at the, ultimately, the 55-feet height allowance in the draft specific plan did not make it through Town Council last summer, and ultimately, it did kind of thwart our opportunity to build that product type. I can go through why that is, why you can't build it, but that was kind of a specific plan-level conversation.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kane?
I want to return to something Ms. Baker said about schools on the property. You said we were restricted from building a school, and I think I've learned that you're essentially correct, but I was wondering if the town attorney could give his erudite view of why, in fact, we couldn't do that.
I think Wendy did mention that under state law, there's certain parameters where you can and cannot build, and one is, like you said, it has to be so many feet away from the freeway. It has to be so many feet away from the gas station, and the overhead that was put up there, you are limited to a certain area. And then within that certain area, then there are individual owners where there's buildings that are already built on, and so that's the diagram up there, which leaves very little on the property you can. The specific plan does allow for a school to be built on there, but we didn't designate any specific area. And so, that's the diagram up there, which leaves very little on the property you can. The specific plan does allow for a school to be built on there, but we didn't designate any specific area that would require a school to be built.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you. Commissioners, are we ready to wrap it up and hear from the public? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Baker. All right. We will now invite comments from members of the public. Due to the number of speaker cards, I'm going to call your names three at a time. You will have a full three minutes to make your comments. As you've noticed, a yellow warning light will come on, and that will tell you that you've got 30 seconds before the red light comes on, and then your time will be up. Commissioners may have questions for you at the conclusion of your remarks. Our first three speakers will be Ann Robinson, Kathleen Willey, and Ray Kearns.
Ann Robinson, 201 Charter Oaks Circle. I would like to compliment Grosner on the time and effort they have exhibited through this entitlement process and on the work that they've done with our community to address all of our concerns. I have three concerns regarding the current North Forty application. The first concern, consistency, is based on one of the guiding principles for the North Forty. The principle is that the type, density, and intensity of the new land use shall be consistent with that of the immediate neighborhood. I do not see how the density of this proposal is consistent with the immediate neighborhood, which is Highland Oaks. Most of the Highland Oaks homes are ranch-style homes with, at the most, eight homes per acre, and the North Forty's residential density looks at least double the density of the immediate neighborhoods. Also, how does this proposal achieve the theme of the 2020 general plan of preserving the existing small-town character of Los Gatos? There is also one area on the plan along Los Gatos Boulevard between the gas station and the office buildings where the developer proposed housing units, and I was under the impression that the area along Los Gatos Boulevard was to be all commercial to be consistent with the existing office buildings. Please lower the density of this proposal by reducing the housing in the Lark District by at least 100 housing units and use these 100 housing units in the Northern District, still using the 20 units-per-acre density. By reducing the number of housing units, the proposed development will be more consistent with the existing neighborhoods, preserve the small-town character of Los Gatos, provide more open space, so it reflects the rural and agricultural history of the site, and this will also decrease the impact on the Los Gatos School District. My second concern is the lack of integration of the commercial and residential components. Instead of having the Lark District all residential and the Northern District all commercial, integrate the commercial and residential components of this development, which will give rise to a more balanced development and mitigate some of the traffic and parking issues. I don't feel it is a good idea to give the developer of the first 20 acres of the development all the residential component of the specific plan. It would be best if there was a master plan for the entire 40 acres so that this project is not developed in a piecemeal fashion. My third concern is the several pending developments close to the North Forty, such as the medical buildings on Samaritan Drive and Samaritan Court, which will provide a net increase of 364,726 square feet to the immediate area. At the end of Lark is the Albright Development, which is only half-completed, which will add an additional 242,500 square feet. Then, coming in the future is the Dell Avenue Plan, which calls for the development of over 2 million square feet. The impact of these nearby developments need to be carefully considered when approving any development on the North Forty. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Kathleen Willey?
Good evening. Kathleen Willey, 135 Cardinal Lane. My husband and I moved into this charming town of Los Gatos five and a half years ago with our young boys. We chose Los Gatos for the small-town feel, being able to walk and bike to school, and to educate our children in excellent schools. Therefore, my biggest concerns about the North Forty development are how it will impact the safety of our children and how it will impact the schools. We currently walk or bike to Blossom Hill School every day. Our neighborhood, with no sidewalks or bike lanes, is already a cut-through for Los Gatos High School kids and for cars trying to avoid Los Gatos Boulevard. Safe routes to school has been trying to get people out of their cars and onto their feet to avoid excessive traffic. With the added population and cars that 320 homes in the Los Gatos School District will bring, I fear people will be unwilling to do this, creating additional pollution and dangerous conditions around our schools. Additionally, getting to the Los Gatos Trails of Asona from East Los Gatos will become even more dangerous for bikers and walkers. And sadly, there was a fatality on Lark Avenue from a biker not too long ago. And the Lark and Blossom Hill are very narrow. I don't know how successful an additional bike lane would be there. So, I'm pleased to hear the developers say that they would like to encourage people to get out of their cars, so I propose that the developer build a pedestrian bridge to at least make it safer for people getting to the trails. Also, how can a proposal for 320 homes be approved when the current Los Gatos schools are so overcrowded already? I believe that there is still a discussion, including a school in the North Forty. I would hope a school has precedence over a gas station. So, how can we move forward with any development until we know when or where the school might be built? The specific plan of the North Forty called for housing in all three districts. There is no reason to crowd all the housing into our school district. Furthermore, one project goal was to appeal just to seniors, young professionals, and empty nesters, thus avoiding school impacts. Now, we find that out of 320 units planned, 135 will be two bedrooms, 54 will be three bedrooms. This violates the specific plan guidelines that the project should mitigate the impact on schools. The North Forty should spread the 320 homes into additional phases in different school districts to avoid overly impacting our schools. As a mom and a tax-paying Los Gatos resident, I urge the town to not let the greedy developers compromise the safety and education of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willey. All right. Our next speaker is Ray Kearns. Last call for Ray Kearns. All right. I'm going to call the next three speakers. Stephen Furlough, Chris Chapman, and Eric Wade.
My name is Stephen Furlough. I live on Los Gatos Boulevard at 16345 Los Gatos Boulevard in the Villa de Los Gatos. I've watched several developments around that area in the last few years. I've shown up at meetings and opposed them. They've gone through anyway. One is on Caldwell Avenue, and without question, that added to the traffic on Los Gatos Boulevard. The next one is on Los Gatos Boulevard between Fisher and, between Mitchell and Roberts Road, a very high-density project, and that has immensely added to the traffic on Los Gatos Boulevard, as I live right next door to it. I don't believe a word that anybody would ever say, including an environmental impact report, that says traffic won't be a problem. If, further, I'm looking at the guiding principles here. The North Forty will look and feel like Los Gatos. Well, this is the first that I've actually seen a picture of it on the screen, and it looked like a city to me. Didn't look like it was going to have the look and feel of Los Gatos. The North Forty will embrace hillside views, trees, and open space. Every day, I drive down Los Gatos Boulevard towards Campbell, and I drive back home on Los Gatos Boulevard. And every single year, the view of the hillsides gets less and less because the buildings get taller and taller. The North Forty will address the town's residential or commercial unmet needs. I think that's spoken for. I don't believe that that will happen. The North Forty will minimize or mitigate impacts on town infrastructure, schools, and other community services. I think it will make it worse. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Furlough, for your comments. All right, next speaker.
Hello. My name is Chris Chapman. I live at 201 Mistletoe Road in Los Gatos. I'd like to talk about a backup plan. What happens when, five years from now, the Dell Avenue complex has been developed, the Netflix facility is fully up and running? And because there's no 85 South entrance ramp on Winchester, that means all of that traffic is going to have to go south on Winchester, turning left on Lark, right past this new development. And so, we have this problem where the town, there's no real solution to the beach traffic that we have in our town. And five years from now, there's going to be no real alternative to the traffic that this environmental study didn't address. And so, I'd like to know, we talk about what's going to happen 20 years from now. What's our backup plan five years from now? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. Eric Wade?
Hi, Eric Wade, 17710 Bruce Avenue. I'm actually in Monte Serrano. I actually have a letter here that I just wanted to pass out to you, Commissioner.
Yes. Did you wish to speak as well?
I am actually the chairperson for the Site and Architecture Commission over at the City of Monte Serrano, and we don't get in crowds like this, but we review only residential projects. I'm also a design-build contractor and a third generation in the town of Los Gatos. And all the things I've been hearing from everybody make a lot of sense. I just put a few of my thoughts down on the piece of paper there. Some of my numbers are off a little bit in light of some of the new developments, but I've also addressed it to council members, which, in fact, you're not. You're commissioners like myself. I was just bullet-pointing some of the things I thought would be beneficial to the development. I think everybody understands that this most likely will be developed sometime in the future. But again, obviously, to consider how it conforms to the development plan or the residential site plan that the town of Los Gatos has. I was hoping for possibly a larger orchard section along Lark Avenue to commemorate the Yuki family orchard, so maybe a greater setback, which my father actually worked in back in the 50s. And just to maybe bring the height down, the total height of the dwellings down to two-story maximum. The height of some of these structures seems excessive and certainly not in, you know, aligned with residential developments in Los Gatos. So, I just got those notes on my letter there and hope you take them into consideration. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. All right. Our next three speakers will be Cece Lapion with Carl Lapion, and combined, they will have three minutes together. After that, we'll have Kay Little and Cindy Schneider.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing us to talk with you this evening. I am here not to speak about the density, but about our community's safety. This is an issue because I am an operating room nurse at O'Connor Hospital. People are not discussing the facts that fire trucks, ambulances, doctors, nurses, anesthesiologists, surgeons, any kind of person providing emergency health care to manage the traffic to get to Good Samaritan Hospital is going to become a real nightmare, and I hope none of you have a family member, a loved one, at Good Samaritan Hospital needing emergency care, either in their emergency room or in their operating room, and have your physician or anesthesiologist trapped in traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. No, all right. I need to remind you again, no clapping, please. All right. Mr. Lapion, please.
Carl Lipiani, 15890 Shannon Road, and resident for 33 years, East Los Gatos, we call it. And I took a look at the, heard there was a model on display out in the lobby here, and took one look at the model, and, I mean, it's, there's no guessing about it. This project, it has too high a density. I agree with the previous gentleman. Cut it back to two stories maximum. It's too big a project for, even for 40 acres worth of property. It's going to devastate the streets. Too much density, and that's the end of my story. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Planning Commissioners for your service and for this opportunity to speak. 453 Monterey Avenue in Los Gatos. I owned the home for 43 years. Like many Los Gatos residents, when I saw the story polls, I was stunned at the height and density of the proposed development. Then the phone calls from my out-of-town friends, most of them over in Santa Cruz, began to come in, and they said, "What is Los Gatos thinking?" And I didn't know what to say to them. I've looked at the model, and I have to say I have some real concerns. It does not look and feel like Los Gatos to me. I'm no city planner, but one of the things that bothered me is it's so square. It's so right-angled, instead of meandering, but among other things. As a retired high school teacher, I have serious concerns about the impact so many new homes will have on our outstanding schools. I do not believe that the size of a home will discourage a family from purchasing a house in Los Gatos that would allow their children to attend schools here. And then, the town attorney stated the impact on schools cannot be considered, but I had been told a couple of years ago that if the homes were in a certain area, the kids would go to Campbell Schools, and Campbell wanted the students and have room for them. But if they were pushed to a different area, they would go to Los Gatos Schools, and we all know that that is a difference in the price you're going to get for the houses.
If you could please address the commission as you speak. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I'm asking that the developer, I'm asking the developer to please make the development less massive and with a little more Los Gatos charm. Thank you.
Thank you. And can you also state your name for the record?
Kay Little.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Cindy Schneider, 233 Mattson Avenue, Los Gatos. Good evening, Commission. I would like to start by acknowledging the time and the effort that the Grosner Company has put into this enormous project. However, it is obvious from the story polls and the model in the town chamber's lobby that 320 homes and 66,000 square feet of commercial space is far too much for 22 acres of the 44 acres on this development site. The height blocks our views and creates a concrete barrier. Why isn't the housing spread throughout the project? The first guiding principle of the specific plan for this project is that the North Forty will look and feel like Los Gatos. This proposed development looks like every other freeway housing development on 85, 280, or 101, a 35-foot wall of concrete, multi-storied housing. This is not the Los Gatos I've lived in for 30 years. Again, oh, if the housing were spread on all 44 acres, this project could begin to have a feel of being seamlessly woven into the fabric of our community as the vision statement for the North Forty dictates. The vision statement also says that the North Forty should celebrate our agricultural heritage, our hillside views, and small-town character. Well, I suggest we apply the vision statement and guiding principles this community approved for this project and ask them to start over. The open space in this configuration appears to be non-existent. The open space requirement is 30%, but somehow they are being allowed to count hardscape, pathways, sidewalks. So, tiny strips of green are being considered open green space. It's very sad and not at all residential Los Gatos. Again, I suggest spreading this housing out over the total 44 acres, incorporating parks and expanding real green. Try articulating the heights of these block-like structures, possibly meandering the streets, so this rigid design becomes softer and more unique, because that's what Los Gatos is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider. Next three speakers, Jeffrey Aristide, Kim Wren, Joseph Gemes Nani, and I apologize for any mispronunciation here.
Good evening. I'm Jeffrey Aristide. I'm at 102 Noble Court. I've lived here for 12 years. I've got a wife and four children. They went through the school system. I agree, I want to rehash what I said. It's basically much too robust. It's basically much too robust. It should be scaled back. And I agree, the housing should be spread through the whole property. Frankly, it looks somewhat industrial. And I would say maybe about six years ago, the character of this town did in fact change because of all the excessive building, frankly, and the congestion and the impact with the school system is going to be horrific. I'm assuming there's going to be a few thousand people living there and maybe a few more thousand going there, so we're talking thousands of cars. I mean, to say it's not going to have a massive impact is frankly ludicrous. So I would vote to have it scaled back rather drastically and spread the housing through the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aristide.
Hi, I'm Kim Bryan from 268 Marchmont Drive in Los Gatos. Last year, when the town council finalized their North 40 specific plan, I was pleased. Although it wasn't the orchard that many of us would wish could stay untouched, it was well thought out and represented a plan that was at least bearable. I then attended several education events where the developer was present and seemingly engaged in the community. This made me optimistic that we could maybe create a new North 40 that was an asset to our community. So when I saw the proposal by the developer, I was appalled. It feels like they ignored the conversations they heard and went ahead with a vision that is not Los Gatos. There's been many people who have worked very hard to move the process forward, and instead of trying to minimize the impact on the community, the proposal maximizes the developer revenue. The vision, in my opinion, was to spread the housing, open space, and commercial space throughout the property. Instead, all the housing is in the first phase, right next to Lark and 85, which is already a traffic problem, and all the children will be part of the Los Gatos Unified School District. One of the requirements is that the development look and feel like Los Gatos. This is a senior housing development in the North 40. These are existing senior housing developments in Los Gatos. To show the scale, they're two stories, they're green space, they're meandering paths. This is a wall of building. This is shopping in the North 40. This is downtown Los Gatos. This is a market in the North 40. This is what it would look like in historical Los Gatos. Supposed to blend in with the community. These are all single-family homes. Here, on the other side of the street, is the North 40, where there are no single-family homes. I think that when the North 40 was coming up with their plan, they went to the wrong location and copied Santana Row. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Joseph Geminisni? Sorry.
Joel's good at saying my name, Jiminyani.
Okay.
Yeah, when I, when I looked at the plan, I was thinking, it really doesn't look like Los Gatos either. Part of the problem, I think, is it's, it's a huge, you know, it's 40 acres and they're only developing 22, but 40 acres. And when I look at it, the architecture looks so similar, but it doesn't really look like Los Gatos. So if I'm driving down Los Gatos Boulevard, you know, and I'm looking at the left, I'm going, whoa, where's Los Gatos? We're entering Grosvenorville in honor of the developer. It's going to be Grosvenorville and won't be Los Gatos. I think in a big development, they should have a variation of architectural styles because it's just too large of a tract. I think we need a variation because Los Gatos is eclectic. It's not one style for 40 acres. There's Mediterranean, there's the old, old town, Spanish colonial, there's Victorian, there's all kinds of styles. But this is really modern. I know they're from England, but they're bringing their English architecture here, the modern English architecture here, which I don't appreciate. We took a, we took a survey in 2011, and I took part of the survey. And in that survey, we were talking about the North 40 project. You took it online. The city of Los Gatos did this. And the majority of people said they wanted traditional architecture. One of the options was traditional, modern, whatever. We wanted traditional. This is not traditional. So I'd like to, I want you to ask the developer, what did they do with that survey results? Ask them. And also, what style people wanted? The majority of people wanted a Mediterranean style. Now, you know, I've said this before, I love Mediterranean, Spanish colonial, Italian, whatever, but ask them what happened to that. Why take a survey? Ask the people to do a survey and then the results are ignored. So please, a couple things. If it's a big lot, do a variation of styles to kind of, so it doesn't look like one huge development. It looks like maybe it was built over time by different developers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. All right. Ted Richards, Barbara Dodson, and Kirsten Schum.
I'm Ted Richards. I live at 43 Filmer Avenue in Los Gatos. I'd like to comment on the North 40 user experience. I'm a user experience designer. I design how you pay bills, sign up for memberships, apply for jobs, buy things online. And of note, I designed the interactive kiosk for Walt Disney's Celebration.
Mr. Richards, please address the commission rather than the audience. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. For Walt Disney's Celebration Community located in Disney World Orlando. And North 40 reminds me of Disney's Celebration Community. As a UX, and as a UX designer, I got to thinking about the North 40 user experience. It's an experience based in a walled enclave, much like a medieval castle, surrounded by a moat of congested roads and freeways. Inside are the subjects who will experience the walled community, but not the free and open Los Gatos. Yes, the paintings of ideal North 40 life promises peace, prosperity, and harmony, much like these paintings here, which I saw brought to me when I worked on the Disney project by a painter who emulated Norman Rockwell. But these are not the paintings of Los Gatos, a wonderful, organic town with 100 years of eclectic variety of homes, shops, restaurants, schools, and of course, our wonderful population and citizenry. I think we can do better by this open North 40 land. We can take down the walls and imagine how we would welcome this space in Los Gatos and provide the Los Gatos user experience: family, work, volunteering, schools, celebrations, and parks, open and free. Real briefly, my cartoon, I'm also a cartoonist.
Thank you, Mr. Richards.
My name is Barbara Dodson, 239 Marchmont Drive in Los Gatos. I have a number of concerns about the proposal for Phase 1 of the North 40. I've listed these in a letter to you, so here I'd just like to emphasize two. I think the number one problem is the excessive density of buildings. The specific plan calls for homes in all three districts, yet the developer has jammed all the homes into the Lark area and maxed out the height of many of the residential buildings. The residences are too close together and too tall. The specific plan calls for lower density in the Lark district with increasing density as the development moves north. At least half the residents should be moved to other phases and across the school boundary line, and the buildings within the Lark district should be more spread out with larger swaths of green space in between. Based on what I heard tonight, I hope the town council, we will revisit the land use requirement for 20 homes per acre. A second key issue is look and feel. The specific plan says the development should look and feel like Los Gatos. This development in no way meets this goal. In the Los Gatos North 40 narrative, the developer claims the architectural character in the Lark district combines, quote, "the colors, materials, roof lines, and proportions of a historical agricultural heritage," while reducing the detailing of the style down to its roots. The result is a neighborhood based in tradition with a contemporary and clean aesthetic, unquote. This is just a justification for big, massive, dense, boxy buildings. The architect has reduced the detailing so much that it looks nothing like traditional Los Gatos. I think that when we talk about the North 40 looking and feeling like Los Gatos, we're talking about the Los Gatos of before the 1940s. We're not talking about the look and feel of the recently-built townhomes on Blossom Hill Road or ranch homes built after the 60s or boxy apartments from the 80s. We're talking about homes from when the town was surrounded by orchards. The so-called contemporary and clean aesthetic, which results in massive, heavy boxes without architectural interest, is not what we think of as Los Gatos. The North 40 designs completely lack the elements that give downtown Los Gatos homes charm, such as porches, shutters, pane windows, bay windows, setbacks, and front yards. We don't think of homes that are higher than trees or that have two-story windows as being traditions in Los Gatos. This development should pay more than lip service to the notion of recalling our town's agricultural past. The tiny vineyard should be enlarged, alleys should be widened, and extensive green space should be added. The cottage cluster idea, which the developer touted but then entirely left out of the development, should be used to reduce density and increase green space. Please require that the development celebrate our history in fact and not just in words. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dodson.
Good evening. My name is Kirsten Schum and my address is 15595 El Gato Lane, Los Gatos. And I first want to say thank you for everybody on the planning commission. You go to all these meetings and that takes a terrible, that just takes so much patience. And I know everybody's working very hard and I know that people at Grosvenor are all working very hard. I'm a little bit nervous, but it's okay. My spouse, and we're gay, and the only reason I'm saying this is because she is Asian and about 100 pounds, and she rides her bicycle every day. She works at Oracle. She, we live off of Los Gatos Almadon, and she was really excited recently because she realized that instead of trying to cross 85 and go over to that pedestrian bridge to get over the Los Gatos Creek Trail to work downtown for Oracle, she could go along Lark and then like Oka Road and then get to Los Gatos Creek Trail. Safety is really, really important. That's one thing. I thought it was very striking, the woman who works in the, as a nurse at Good Sam, she was talking about people being stuck in traffic. So safety and traffic go together. I didn't know about the recent fatality on Lark. That makes me feel very sad and worried. I think that in terms of Los Gatos, it's just a great place. I mean, we have the beautiful Los Gatos library. That's the most amazing thing. I think that in terms of what different people have said, the eighth speaker was saying that her friends had noticed, like from Santa Cruz. So when people drive by, that's what they're going to kind of see, and that's not the sort of advertising that we really want for, for Los Gatos. We want people to come to Los Gatos. We, we do need tax dollars. We do need revenue for the, for the town of Los Gatos, but we need people to come and to feel like this is a relaxing place. We do need, you know, place for housing. We do need step-down, you know, housing for seniors. I'm, as a, as a teacher who's taught for 24 years, and I worked over in the east side, even in the east side, people would come to our school because it was like one of the best in our school district, and they would, you know, do whatever they could, and people will do the same for Los Gatos. People really want to live here, and a lot of those employees, you know, from Netflix and different places like that, they're going to want to have their families here. So thank you for your time. I really, truly, from the depths of my heart, appreciate all your time and all your patience. And I know you all love Los Gatos, and thank you for the library. I love the library. Thank you.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you so much. All right. Han Schum, Jacques Van Nada, Don McHale. Mr. Schum? No? Jacques Van Nada? No? Don McHale? Can they hear me outside? Yes, they can.
Okay.
Pardon me? Okay. Perhaps somebody could tell them that there's some room inside. There is some room in the benches, if anybody would like to have a seat or from the outside if they're listening. Okay, we're ready for you.
Good evening. My name's Don McHale. I live at 31 Mariposa in Los Gatos. I've actually lived there for, coming on, 44 years, the same address. My wife and I have raised a family, taken advantage of the schools, the police and the fire departments, other civic services of the town. We and many of our neighbors look upon the, with extreme skepticism, the, at the negative aspects of the commercial and residential development that this place represents. If I go home to where I live on Mariposa and I, and I look at that neighborhood, which is composed of largely quarter raker lots with front yards and individual trees owned by homeowners, if that place had been built with the same density as this proposed cancer that is being planned for the North 40, there would be no Los Gatos as we know it. What we have in this town is something special, and what this project seeks to do is ruin it, in my humble opinion. I don't think any development of the North 40 should be approved without the intelligent widening and improvements necessary to Los Gatos Boulevard, at least between Lark and Samaritan. One only has to consider the abysmal impact of traffic on Winchester being brought about by the approval of the new Netflix facility that somehow put four separate traffic signals in a 400-yard space of asphalt. And Netflix hasn't even opened yet as far as the major traffic that's going to be going there. So that's the end of my spiel. Thanks.
Thank you. Markeen Smith, John Thatch, and Dominic Huggett.
Hi, Commissioner. My name is Markeen Smith. I live at 201 Drake's Bay Avenue in Los Gatos, and that is off of National Avenue between Los Gatos Almadon Road and Samaritan Drive. And I mention that because it's a traffic, complete gridlock since the four new medical centers have gone in, and their associated parking lots, patients, staff, and everything. So I want to point out that neither Gerald Grosvenor nor the marketing and developing people he's hired to promote the current North 40 application lives or works here. Those developers will never be affected by their project's homogeneity, urbanization, pollution, and gridlock. The town of Los Gatos should require Grosvenor to modify its Phase 1 application in order to comply with the North 40 specific plan, which in my opinion, it does not at this point. The application should include public streets, not private streets, wider pedestrian walkways, larger real green belt areas, not just sidewalks, public park and a playground for the people who live there, larger community garden areas with individual raised garden plot beds available to every unit that has no yard space to grow food or other plants. We need some single-family detached homes there and a community center. If this is a planned development without a community center, I don't know what, how they're ever going to have meetings or anything. I propose that to mitigate the catastrophic traffic and transportation issues, the town should require developer Grosvenor to fund 100% of the traffic improvements because Caltrans cannot provide matching funds due to greatly decreased gas tax revenues. This has changed since the EIR. The EIR is outdated, is in my view, since the medical buildings have opened in our area, right at that corner of Lark Avenue, Samaritan Drive, the new Burton Avenue, Burtonway, and Winchester, I don't know, the whole area, Samaritan, Lark, Los Gatos Boulevard. Anyway, the developer should fund every one of the, all the traffic equinovates because he's solely benefiting from this. And then the developer should also fund 100% of the VTA extension on the light rail to the Sono Station, which town-owned property at the southeast corner of Winchester Boulevard and Lark Avenue to serve the North Forty and surrounding neighborhoods. That would take a lot of the car traffic out of the area, and also enliven our area. A lot of millennials now are going to Campbell, because there is a light rail stop right in the center of the city, and they go there and come back, and they can go downtown from there, or wherever they want. Los Gatos is one of Santa Clara County's oldest communities. Oh, I do want to just finish. The town began in 1868 with just 100 acres of a Mexican ranchero that was selected as a town site. The town's first 100 acres were gradually developed over a period of 150 years.
Thank you. Thank you. I have to stop you. We have a lot of speakers. Thank you very much. Han Schum has arrived, so I'll allow him to go ahead of John Thatch and Dominic. Apparently not. All right. John Thatch?
Excuse me. I got in the wrong pile. I'm part of the applicant's team, so...
Okay. You did get in the wrong pile. Dominic Huggett.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Dominic Huggett. I'm here tonight as a volunteer with Green Belt Alliance. Green Belt Alliance is dedicated to shaping how the Bay Area grows to preserve what's special about our region and make our communities even better places to live. Green Belt Alliance is proud to endorse the North Forty Phase Ones as an example of smart infill development, exactly the type of growth that Los Gatos needs to become an even more thriving, sustainable, and affordable place to live. One of the most important actions we can take in our communities is to use our limited land wisely to create great neighborhoods that meet the needs of today as well as tomorrow. That means creating inviting places to live that use land efficiently, create walkable verdant streets, and add new homes for residents across the income spectrum to help our pressing of housing affordability crisis. It means encouraging a mix of, a mix of homes near jobs and amenities with a rich array of transportation choices. The North Forty Phase One proposal is a prime example of this type of smart infill development with a compact design architecture that enlivens the streetscape, homes for residents across the income spectrum, and a variety of transportation choices, also including integrated green spaces and high-quality green building features. We hope it helps set a precedent for how Los Gatos can become an even better place to live, so that today's teenager can afford to continue to be a part of this community as they graduate, and our older adults can find an option to downsize when they no longer want to take care of a large house, and our workforce can live close to their jobs rather than face a long, grueling commute to the edge of the region. As the Planning Commission reviews the proposal, we have three recommendations: that every opportunity be taken to create safe spaces for walking and biking, particularly to cross Los Gatos Boulevard and Lark Avenue, and that there's a commitment to provide free transit passes for all residents and employees, and someone on-site committed to administering this program as part of a robust transportation demand management program. That's a technique that has proven significantly to increase transit use and reducing traffic and congestion. In addition, we recommend that the North Forty and other new developments, like in Los Gatos, include more homes to better meet the needs of our region without turning to development on our open spaces at the edge of the Bay Area, where over 320,000 acres are currently threatened by sprawl. In conclusion, by transforming this land into a walkable, well-designed, mixed-use development, the North Forty Phase One will help make Los Gatos and the Bay Area a better place to live. We strongly support this proposal and encourage you to approve it. Thank you.
Sir, don't go away. We have a question for you from Commissioner Hudes.
Thank you, and thank you for your letter. In looking at the proposal, I'm a little confused. Are you saying that it needs to be changed to allow safe crossing of Los Gatos Boulevard and Lark? Or are you saying that as you've reviewed it, it is adequate?
Just to make sure that those, those proposed changes are the right changes, that you may review them again and just make sure that they're the most optimal.
Commissioner Hudes?
If I may, one other follow-up. In terms of the Green Belt Alliance and the housing, did you look at the distribution of the housing on this property in terms of it being concentrated in one area? And do you have an opinion about the development from that perspective? If the housing were spread over other areas, would that change your opinion of the development?
We just looked at the current proposed, as it is right now, at 20, 20 units per acre.
But in one area?
No, we haven't.
You didn't look if it were spread out over the other areas as well?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Freeman, Roy Moses, and Ed Morimoto.
My name is Susan Fryman. Close enough. 17380 High Street. Mom of two kids in Van Meter. Same issues I won't go over. We all, we all hate it. Brass tacks, from what I've read and what I've been looking at it. Thank you for Town, Not City, for keeping us educated. Rena. We're being sort of forced between a rock and a hard place. Our town wants to keep the way it is, and it sounds like Sacramento, and the powers that be, SB 50, and the Rena numbers are pushing us where we don't want to go, if I get this correct. It sounds like we're not the only town there. It seems to me that there are communities, I've heard stories of Los Altos or Hillsborough, writing the check and paying the fine. It sounds like we're all letting these developers frame the argument and push us. We have to build it. We have to meet these numbers. Who's saying we have to, and what are the backup plans? What are the alternatives? That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moses?
Roy Moses, 16529 La Croy Court in Los Gatos, East Los Gatos. I was here at the last Planning Commission and Commissioners and Chair. Thank you for all the work that you do. As you know, this is a very serious issue, along with the last one we were here a couple of weeks ago on Shannon and Los Gatos Boulevard. My comment to you was, and I'm saying it here again tonight, that I'm into beauty, and I'm so fortunate in our families and everybody here to live in Los Gatos. Been here for 47 years, raised five children, and I know our grandchildren are not going to be able to live here. And that's just the way progress goes. But unfortunately, we have a chance to save the beauty of this town, and we're counting on you to listen to all these comments. But I'm very upset about the comments that were made by the attorney, because obviously, some things are already in place that might make it very difficult for us to make some of the changes that we feel are very necessary. So, I'd like to know from you, do you think that we, all of us here tonight speaking, have a chance of changing the progress that has been made to this point? Anybody?
Are there any questions?
I'll pose it to the attorney.
This is the public comment period, and it isn't a time for question and answers.
Okay. I'd like to...
All right. Well, we do have a question for you from Vice Chair Kane.
Yes, please.
So, we do have a question for you.
We're only allowed to ask questions of the speakers. Did you know that there is a lot of water under the bridge? And what we did on Shannon was by a different set of rules than we have tonight. Tonight's a 10-year-developed North Forty specific plan. That is the law, as the town attorney said earlier. I love the Hillside Standards Law, and I need to learn to love this law. I don't have an attractive choice. So, a lot of this is a done deal, but not a lot of it. There are still things we can do. If you read the staff report, we have a narrow corridor, and when we finish the public hearing and the applicant has had five minutes of rebuttal, then we will actually get into the case and discuss what we can and can't do on the legal narrow corridor that they've given us. Thank you.
Commissioner Hudes has a question for you as well.
Is this cutting into my time? I do want to have it finished.
No, no. Did we give him his full three minutes?
No, thank you. I wonder if you have some comments that could help us in terms of, are there some ways that this application is not consistent with the general plan or the applicable law that we have to apply there? And that's really what I'm trying to listen for from every comment, and to recognize where there's some ground for us to look at the application versus the zoning, the specific plan, general plan, et cetera.
No, because most of the public, I don't think, here in this, in this audience, I don't think we really have gone to meetings before. This has raised the hair on our backs about what's going on, and I really apologize to my kids, my grandkids, and all the other people that I was not here 10 years ago or 11 years ago to see really what was going on, and to fight this thing tooth and nail. So, it's our job right now is to take it from this point and do whatever we can to mitigate and minimize what is going to take place. The Yucis have a right, and all the other property owners have a right, to do what they like, but this is a community, and like I pointed out last time, it says the town of Los Gatos. This is not a city, and we don't need this type of ugliness taking place. Now, you can drive through town, but you can't drive through town anymore. I've been here for 47 years. You cannot keep building, putting more people into a small box without killing us and suffocating us, and that's exactly what's taking place. So, this proper, this, this, this project area has to be minimized. It has to be minimized. You have to listen to the people of this community, and it's unfortunate that things have already been done that kind of say, "It's too late, buddy. You showed up too late." So, times of the essence, the whole, this whole Bay Area right now is in congestion, and it's in gridlock, and it's going to continue that way because it's such a great place to live, and because we have such, we have, we are the brains of the world and the high-tech business, and we are all coming here, and everybody wants to live here, and they're paying the prices to buy, buy real estate to do that. One other comment I'll make, I just found out today, that you cannot, you can buy a house in the east part of Los Gatos that has Campbell Union Schools or Union School, Union Elementary School, and you cannot send your kids to Alta Vista Grade School. It's been closed. You cannot send your kids to Union Middle School, because it's been closed. The people that are moving into Los Gatos, and they don't even know it. It's just coming about right now, have to go and transfer their kids and travel, and travel a further distance to take their kids to school, which is going to cause more gridlock. Who in the hell is planning around here? Who is planning for the future? Nobody.
All right. Please allow Mr. Moses to finish up. He can't speak with the clapping going on.
Yes. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to live long enough to see what's going to happen, but I'm going to do whatever I can do to make sure that this community tries to stay at least at the level it is right now. We cannot continue on this path. Attorneys can do whatever they want to do, but listen, you better make sure that the public is aware, and I let the ball drop. I let the ball drop, because I did not come to these council meetings, and I'm kicking myself, and I will for the rest of my life, but you're going to hear from me in the future, and you're going to hear from the rest of these people, and I thank you for all you do. But all these people that are working behind our backs and not realizing what's going to take place, they're going to hear from us.
All right. Don't go away. We might have a question for you. Are there any further questions for Mr. Moses?
Thank, thank you for your comments.
There is none. Thank you so much. All right. All right. Mr. Morimoto.
Good evening. My name is Ed Morimoto, and I live at 460 Monterey Avenue. I'm a longtime resident, a proud graduate of both Fisher and Los Gatos High, and a homeowner for over 20 years. As some of you know, I am also a member of the Yuki family, one of the North Forty property owners. While I have more than a casual interest in this development, I also have had a front-row seat to the North Forty public process, and certainly have attended more than my fair share of hearings in these chambers. Mine surely is but a fraction of the time and effort invested in the North Forty by dozens of consultants, town staff, elected and appointed officials, and thoughtful community members such as those here tonight. For those made first aware of this development by the orange netting, I imagine it's hard to fathom, let alone appreciate, the eight years invested in getting us to this point. Work put in not only by town government and the developers, but by citizens of this community, participating in committees to advise the specific plan or housing element, stepping up to join commissions such as this one, or by organizing community groups like the Los Gatos Community Alliance, who stand for sensible town policy. Even those of us close to this process have likely only experienced a fraction of the hundreds, if not thousands, of pieces of public testimony, the reams of impact studies ranging from traffic to schools to downtown businesses, or the hours of debate on topics such as meeting regional housing needs, the placement of residences on the site, or the adequacy of traffic mitigations. Now, I mention this not to deter anyone from voicing their opinion tonight, for the first time or the 50th, for or against. I do so merely with the hope we can all appreciate the breadth and depth of the discussion that has gone into the future of my family's orchard, and perhaps be open to the idea that even if this plan doesn't align to one's wishes or beliefs, it is one whose compromises are the product of thoughtful and earnest effort. So, we, so, so as some may cry unequivocally that the North Forty's density and scale are not consistent with the town, with the Los Gatos's look and feel, I'd ask that they consider what our town might be if our forbearers had been as uncompromising. Many of us live in homes that were once, that were only farmland when my family first arrived here 75 years ago, and how vibrant would Los Gatos be without 17 and 85, roads carved out of our orchards to connect us to our jobs and to bring customers to our businesses? As we face a genuine housing crisis, responsibility for which neither cause nor cure stops at our town limits, isn't it possible, just possible, considering thoughtful, selective use of higher density over our traditional sprawling, car-centric approach just might give us a better chance at preserving our quality of life? But my time runs short, so I'd like to close by thanking you for the challenging task you are now undertaking, and express my faith in your ability to consider the full breadth of this eight-year journey, as well as the input you are hearing here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Morimoto. You do have a question from Vice Chair Kane.
I have to make this a question. Do you know that we thank you for attending, and we thank you for your family's contribution?
Thank you for saying so.
All right. We are on target to hear from all of you tonight. However, for now, we are going to take a 15-minute break. That's Olga Smith, Sylvia Van Gundy, and Mary Ellen Burr.
Identity is very important to me. My full name is Olga Inzis Smith. Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you very much for your work for our town. I'm very nervous, because I haven't spoken in a long time in a place like this. The developers, I believe, are going to destroy the small-town character of my community, which is Los Gatos. It's mi casa. I moved here in 1971, so that's about 43 years ago. In 1974, I opened a small four-card store in Old Town. Old Town was a school, and it, it kept that character. So, there were small retailers there that made their things. Then, Los Gatos changed. We brought chain stores. And 10 years later, I had to leave my beloved business and move it somewhere else, but I still live here. And I live on 157 Holly Hill Way, which is a cul-de-sac from Garden Hill, which is two blocks from Lark Avenue. I've been in that house for 43 years. I love that area. I love the community. I love the park, Sona Park. I work, walk there every day. My son roll down the hills. We had parus. I participate in the PTA at Berry School, Van Meter, Los Gatos High. And I did fundraising events for the earthquake of Mexico in downtown Los Gatos with the support of this beautiful town. And it's, for me, is very sad to see those orange things there. I wish I had participated before, but really, my life for the last 45 years has been very active, very full, running all over the place. This community came together when we had the earthquake, and we rebuilt from there. My husband was injured in the quake of '89. He broke his back. He was coming home from Berkeley. So, I know what the community and how home is. We used to pick apricots down Oka Road. Those apricot streets are no longer there. My son lives here, and he wants to, he said, "Mother, don't, don't sell the house." My husband died two years ago. What am I going to do? I want to stay here. I want to stay here. This massive development will be even deadly and cause serious injuries to our citizens. I have here a police report. The police report says traffic collision report. I was hit by a car that was speeding when I was walking here. It happened on December 21st, 1st of last year. Just before Christmas, I was shopping at Trader Joe's and pushing my shopping cart and a car speeding hit me. If I didn't scream, he would have run over me. Because I screamed, he put his brakes on.
All right.
I have a bad back. I am here since 6 o'clock.
Ms. Smith, I'm sorry, your time ran out, but we appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much. Sylvia Van Gundy.
Hi, I'm Sylvia Van Gundy and I'm at 3 Kimball Avenue. Good evening, members of the Commission. I really appreciate the hard work that you've been going through and being my fellow neighbors, I really appreciate that. You are all my neighbors here in the town of Los Gatos. And I'm not going to address the people behind me at all, but thank you as well. It sounds like a lot of things have been done, and I've lived here for 15 years. So part of it is my bad for not participating in the development of the North Forty Plan. But I have a couple of suggestions. I agree with everybody about the size and scope of this development and how it is totally out of character with the town of Los Gatos. I live above, on the hill up here, and in 1892 Victorian, and I've spent the better part of those 15 years restoring with love that Victorian and keeping it within the character of the community that was originally developed by the founding parents of the town of Los Gatos. I would suggest to the Planning Commission and Mr. Schultz, I'm not sure how to do this, that we go back and re, we investigate the EIR. The Environmental Impact Report, I don't know for sure when it was passed, but it sounds like it's out of date with the recent developments, and to say that there is no effect, there's going to be no effect on our schools and no effect on our traffic is ridiculous. Right now, our schools, my son is at the Los Gatos High School, and we were told that it is so impacted that they are adding trailers and trailers and trailers. We are also, I have been through two remodels of Van Meter Elementary School. I don't know where they're going to put these kids. To use the phrase that this is being built for millennials, well, that's great. Yes, there was an accurate statement. Millennials are the single largest population cohort in the United States today, because while I was sitting here, I looked it up at the U.S. Census. Millennial, by the way, is people born between 1982 and 2000. That means some of the millennials are 34 years old. And to say that they will not have children while they are living in this monstrosity and have to send their kids to school is an outright lie. They are 34 years old. So that being said, I would like for us to figure out a way for the Planning Commission and the peoples of Los Gatos to go back to the Town Council and ask that they revisit the EIR. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Mary Ellen Burr.
My name is Mary Ellen Burr. I live at 85 Roberts Road, and I've lived in Los Gatos since 1985. I just wanted to restate that my concerns about the impact on the schools, and I would like to see some discussion with the planning about which schools these students will go to and how those schools will be able to accommodate those new students. I don't want that issue to be ignored. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you and goodbye. Hello, Dick Clift, Anne Marie De Cesar, and Tom Timmott. I hope I'm pronouncing names correctly.
Hi, my, my name is Anne Marie De Caesar, and my family and I just moved here from Campbell specifically for the schools. We purchased new construction on Los Gatos Boulevard at 236 Los Gatos, and it's a craftsman style that fits in with the style of the avenue. And I just want to read a letter that I sent and missed off the cutoff so it's, can be added to the record. My family and I are in favor of a limited development and historic preservation of a large part of the currently undeveloped Los Gatos North Forty Orchard and Historic Buildings, and we suggest at least half of the orchard and all the historic buildings are set aside as a public open space and child-friendly museum. As I understand it, the original plan approved by the Los Gatos Council last year called for 270 housing units on 44 acres, and after plan approval, the project was redesigned to compress 320 housing units onto 22 acres and added in low-rise, low-income housing and 435,000 square feet of commercial space. And that the Los Gatos Town Council communicated and the development guiding, guiding principles, the look and feel of Los Gatos, to embrace the hillside views, trees and open space, address the town's unmet residential and commercial needs, and mitigate impact on the town infrastructure, schools, and community services, but these guiding principles were ignored in the development plan after approval. The look and feel of the 35-foot low-rise apartment complexes in the 435,000-square-foot mall and the 320 high-density homes do not conform to any of the Los Gatos Town Development Guiding Principles and put a strain on the Los Gatos Union and Los Gatos-Saratoga Joint High School Districts. Please do not approve the North Forty Development Project as it exists, but rather change it to something that would preserve the historic orchard and implement smaller-scale development that would support, rather than strain, the town infrastructure, schools, and community services. Specifically, my family and I are opposed to the current Los Gatos North Forty Development Plan for the following reasons. One, traffic is already very congested after 3:00 p.m. on 17th South and Los Gatos Boulevard. 17th South and Los Gatos Boulevard would be, oops, I have to skip to my last two questions because I'm running out of time. Here are some questions the town should consider before moving forward with any project approval. Has the Town Council considered if the tax dollars collected from the new development would be adequate, would be adequately offset the additional draw on town resources? Would rental property owners contribute a share of tax dollars proportional to those homeowners to compensate for more students in the middle and high schools? Would the existing elementary schools even be able to accommodate such a large crease in enrollment? And there's more, and I'd just like to submit the letter. Thank you very much for your time.
And thank you, Ms. De Cesar.
Good evening. My name is Dick Clift. I live at 17670 Torney Road in Los Gatos. Been in here for 37 years. Things have changed since we got here tonight, finding out that this plan doesn't look like it can be varied very much right now. So I'm just going to make general comments to the whole situation here in Los Gatos. Everything in this town is completely stressed out, from schools to parking to driving on the streets. And I don't see how you can justify putting another project in like this that's going to have an impact on everybody, and you can see, most of the people in this town don't want it. Period. And I think you need to go back with your attorney and figure out a way to stop it. Bottom line, no more development. We, we've, we've come to the limit in this town. You've got to start scaling back. We just can't live on every square inch of this town and have a car on every square inch of the street. You can't park, park anywhere now. I know you guys are doing a good job. I don't mean to lay it on you guys because you're trying to do a good job, but things need to change.
You can lay it on us. We're here to listen. So, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Hi, well, I'm pulling up my talk here. Could you put up Slide 16 of Don Capobrace's presentation, please? Thank you. Tom Timmo, I live on Johnson Avenue.
Thank you.
I also co-founded a group with my neighbor Rod T. called Town Not City. Like many of the people that have spoken here, I was asleep for nine of the last 10 years. Got a lot of things going on. I ran a little thing called LGEF for a few years to raise money for the town schools. Been very involved in the community, sat on parish council at St. Mary's for a while. We all have lots of activities, honor your contribution, sitting on the Planning Commission. We all do certain things. Unfortunately, it's not until big story polls go up that we all realize, whoa, hold on, what is this? And I, I get it, you know, since we started Town Not City, we now have 2,900 people on the site that are followers of it. When we make posts now, 50,000 people click on them and view them. Those are Facebook's numbers. 20,000 share our posts. 20,000, it's geofenced. We only allow people that are either from Los Gatos, live in Los Gatos, or are geofenced in Los Gatos to have those on their phone and their news feed. 91%, when we did two survey monkeys, 91%, over 1,000 people, when they poll people for the presidential elections, 1,000 out of 30,000 is considered a very viable sampling. 91% say they don't want this. Do you know the number one reason they cite? Town character. They cite traffic in the schools and everything else, and I realize that now we have the traffic in schools impact thanks to a statement of overriding consideration, as Mr. Schultz will tell you. You really can't do anything about it. You hear the snickers in the crowd, everybody knows it's a joke. We're going to have our schools overwhelmed, we're going to have our roads crowded, but you can't do anything. But like a jury, you're akin to a jury right now. There are subjective things in that 330 pages, or however many pages it is. There are subjective things like, is this Los Gatos Town character? Subjectively, you can say no. And that is your job as the Planning Commission. You can't override the EIR. You can't change the law, which is the specific plan that was passed by a three-to-two, Sayak, Rennie, and Marsha Jensen, those three, three-to-two, that became law. But there are subjective parts of that. Stand on those and say no to this. You have the ability on the subjective parts of this plan, Mr. Schultz can coach you on that, and say, "This is not Los Gatos. This is San Jose. This is Santana Row. This is not what we all moved here for." Thank you.
We appreciate your comments. All right, Kelly Havens, Dr. Joan Olaf, and Susan Bennett, along with Joanne Rogers, speaking together.
I, I live with my family at 105 Sunday Avenue in Los Gatos, and I work with my other family at 15047 Los Gatos Boulevard, where I'm managing partner for Los Gatos Medical Office Center. So, you know, development is inevitable, you know, we, none of us like it. My request is to do things mindfully and thoughtfully, and I have a very, you know, personal interest for myself and, and patients in our building. And that has to do with, we have a left-hand turning lane into our building now. And when we developed our property, and some of you may remember 11 years ago, this was allowed to happen, and although it's been wonderful for us, it's actually had a secondary issue, and that's, it decongests Los Gatos Boulevard to a degree. Because as you probably know, because I deal with it every day, the congestion on Los Gatos Boulevard has been horrendous. And what was brought out earlier by one of the nurses, it becomes a real safety factor for us, for our patients, and we have emergencies that happen in the buildings. It's just inevitable when you're, when you're dealing with patients. EMRs come in, come in, and these guys can't get to the hospital if they can't access across Los Gatos Boulevard. So I, I really would like to put it on record to say this is not just an issue for, for site development, it's not just an issue for, for visual, you know, impact, it has to do with safety of our citizens. And it's something that, that needs to be dealt with, not only for now, but long-term. There's been some suggestion it was a short-term thing, it really should not be a short-term thing. If you go back and look at some of the Environmental Impact Reports that were done, interestingly enough, even the developers' own traffic reports recommended keeping it. Any changes that should be done to Los Gatos Boulevard should really wait until you have the access all the way down to Smarin Drive, because if you piecemeal this, it's just going to be a disaster, because right now, it's already congested. And if we do these changes now and don't allow for this, the congestion's going to be horrific. So, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Olaf.
I'm Joanne Rogers from 15287 Top of the Hill Court.
And good evening. I'm Susan Burnett and I live at 85 Ellenwood.
This is a role play that, of what we're dealing with in Los Gatos today.
Hi, Joanne. I haven't seen you for a while. Want to come over for a cup of coffee? We could discuss what's happening in Los Gatos.
Sure. What time would work for you to have me come by?
Oh, it would be best if you could get here by 10:00 because you'll have a problem getting to my house after that time. You know, they've been closing off Massaul and Ridgecrest because of the traffic unless you live in the neighborhood, because 85 gets congested, so traffic uses Highway 9, and then they cut through my neighborhood to get to Highway 17.
Oh, but Susan, I can't come before 10:00 a.m. because there's a line of traffic trying to turn left off of Kennedy Road and onto Los Gatos Boulevard. And when the light turns green, the cars can't move because it's so blocked up on Los Gatos Boulevard. And, and I can't, if, I can't turn right on Los Gatos Boulevard before 9:00, but if I could, I'd be stuck in the Van Meter traffic, and even worse, in the parents dropping off their kids at Fisher. So.
Yes, Joanne. Well, if you can make it to Highway 9, but don't use North Santa Cruz Avenue, it's a parking lot. Just make a U-turn and use the parking lot behind Holt's Restaurant and, or try University Avenue, because the problem will be trying to cross North Santa Cruz Avenue to get up to Ellenwood.
I don't think this is going to work, Susan. I, I can't make it to your house without getting in a traffic jam, and we can't meet downtown. There's too much traffic and there's no parking.
Well, um, well, why don't we meet in Saratoga? Can, 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 can you avoid the traffic to, to get to Starbucks in Saratoga?
Well, let's see. If I take the back way down Kennedy Road to Shannon Road, I could cut over Short Road, then cut through Cherry Blossom to Los Gatos Almeden, then I'd turn right on Los Gatos Boulevard, well, I'd try to, and then I'd try to turn left on Lark, and then left on University onto Dave's, the hard part will be crossing over. Oh, no, all of those roads are going to be overcrowded even before the North Forty and Dell and Oka are developed.
Um.
Oh, Susan, Jo and I have lived here 43 years, and you've lived here most of your life. Have you ever seen such disregard for the, the citizens of Los Gatos and our families?
No, and I guess it makes you wonder why the story polls are incomplete. Did they not want us to see and visualize how large the Phase 1 project is? What about Phase 2? And I understand there's actually a Phase 3.
All right, we got to finish up real quick.
Okay. I think we need to change the logo up there. That shows a lot of green orchards leading up to our beautiful hills, and it has to be all covered with homes and condominiums and commercial.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. All right, I called Kelly Havens. Is she still around? No.
All right.
Jan Olson, Amy Desparz, and Wayne Scott.
Good evening. I'm Jan Olson. I live at 15189 Lester Lane. I live directly behind the Office Depot, which is on Lark, which is directly across the street from the North Forty. So, um, we moved here in 1994, and the Office Depot at that point was, was a Nissan dealership lot that was just nothing, because they had been out of business. And they were looking to, Office Depot was looking to build there. And I became part of a charrette, which had like 10 or 12 teams of 10 people looking to see how we wanted, how we envisioned the Los Gatos Boulevard. Los Gatos Boulevard, we knew was going to be a gateway coming off of 85, and we wanted it to be. it to be, at that point, we were, you know, how were we thinking this to be? And all the way up Los Gatos Boulevard, and became the Los Gatos Boulevard Plan. One of the things that had to be pedestrian-friendly, we really didn't want chains, but now, look, our town's full of them, maximum height of Office Depot was either 25 or 35 feet, because we did not want it overbearing, and needed to be pedestrian-friendly, and every team had a suggestion for the North Forty, and none of them looked anything like this. They were all open spaces, or parks, or soccer fields, or, you know, little retail for the north people. I have to tell you, this is not what I'm seeing at all. This was in the works 20 years ago. I have been going to the meetings on and off of the past, since the committee and the town council and all that, and I understand that you can't deviate from the specific plan, but I think what we need to do is go back to the town council and have them change the specific plan. We need to go back to that level and have them fix this. Couple of things, I think the model is very deceptive, and I've pointed this out, all the open spaces on the north end that shows trees and open space is not going to be, that's all part of Phase 2. We do not know what Phase 2 is going to be. I've suggested they mark those trees and open spaces with little cards saying, just like they have all the other things labeled, Phase 2, but it still hasn't been done, and it's not going to be what it looks like, folks. I would like to see what Phase 2 here, and see what Phase 2 entails, because that's the whole thing, the 400,000 square feet of commercial space, and the proposed hotel, and all the other. I want to see the whole thing, not just this all crammed area. I was told the senior housing, the move-down would have been three-story, but was denied, and they can't put an elevator into two stories, so therefore, they're not going to have senior housing. They're going to be doing neighborhood-serving businesses, they need to ask us what we want, because nobody has come to our neighborhood, and we are directly behind, we're closer than the, the people behind the, whatever they're called, the rotten Robbie.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Olson.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amy Desparz, 267 Longridge Road, I actually stood here a month ago in front of you, and I'm truly sorry that you've had to deal with all of this, because this was 10 years ago, and most of you were not on the planning commission. I did hear someone say that it is water under the bridge, but when this started, unfortunately, I was not sleeping 10, 20 years ago, as Jan reminded us, that there was that general plan for the Los Gatos Boulevard that we all worked on, this didn't fit it. 10 years ago, there wasn't the Gateway Medical Building, the Bluebird Lane, the Laurel Muse, Panera, those are all the things that I've stood up here and talked about, where's the growth, where's the vision of our town? I've been standing up here through all of these developments over the last 20 years since I've lived here, and wondering what happened to that general plan for the Boulevard? Where's the general plan that addressed traffic, housing, retail? Gateway, right, where the new Stanford Development is, is supposed to be, was supposed to have some commercial retail space in it, it is medical, we did not want that in our neighborhood. So, I'm standing here in front of you, I feel bad for you that you have to clean up these pieces, but we need to bring back the general plan, and as Mr. Timko says, speak with your attorney, figure out a way that we can make this work and fit our town. You are the stewards of our wonderful town, you hold the future of our charming town in the palms of your hands. You can either keep Los Gatos wonderful, charming, historic, family-friendly, a true community, a place where people want to come and retire, or come and raise their families because of the schools, the resources, the history, the supportive community we live in, or you can choose to turn it into a small town that resembles a developer's dream come true, a mini-city with a lot of houses and buildings crammed into small lots, just so the developer can fill his pockets at our expense. A place with lots of traffic, and an even more frustrated group of people who will want to move away, because they are tired of it taking 30 minutes to get from one side of the town to the next. We voted for you to make decisions that will enhance our community, not jeopardize our town's infrastructure, schools, and community services. Please listen to the people of this unique town, and do not feel you owe the developers anything. We live here, we love this town, we have a commitment to making it the best it can be, as do each of you. I'm asking, just because the applicant is asking for the maximum development standards does not mean you have to accept the application, I encourage you to use the minimum required standards. Did you, time not enough, time, um, 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 um. There's no specific timeline established for the North Forty specific plan, so I encourage you to take your time and look into every aspect of this project, and make sure it will fully fit, as it says. Celebrate our history, agriculture, heritage, hillside views, and small-town character, it is respectful of precious community resources, and offers unique attributes and enrich the quality of life of all of our residents. That is what that needs, the North Forty needs to represent, it's written right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Desparz.
Hello, my name is Wayne Scott, I live at 108 Magnuson Terrace in Los Gatos. This is the second time that I've spoken in front of this, in front of you fine folks. It's been an education, each time I come here, I learn more, and I appreciate now, just this evening, the constraints that you all have to deal with. So, last weekend, I was at a family gathering, well, it wasn't family, it was actually, it was a Persian celebration, with a bunch of people came from all around, and we got to talking about where do people go for dinner, and things like that, and it's interesting that two of the couples, they said, we don't go to Los Gatos anymore, and I said, why not? And they said, well, the traffic, they said, it's just not a joy to go there, so we go to other places now, because it's just, just to get there and to find a place to park. So, and I'm thinking, this is, we haven't even added these additional homes on here, so that was, so it's interesting that people are becoming aware of the issues we're having down here, and they're making some decisions about where they want to do business, and so traffic is part of the equation for some of these folks. So, there's been so many things that were brought up tonight, that's hard to add anything to what has already been said, but one thing I have, in particular, is traffic. The traffic is just, is just incredible, going down Los Gatos Boulevard, I commute to go down to Los Gatos and get on, try to get on 17, takes me a couple of lights, coming back is also a lot of fun, and so I see this, the plan over here, and this A Street is, I mean, these guys are going to, the residents are going to come in and out of that, off A Street onto Lark, and I'm thinking, holy cow, how are those people even going to get out of that place, because there's no light, and then we have all these people coming down, all getting to Lark, try to get on 17, it just seems like they're not going to be able to get out, or, you know, something's, something's going to happen. So then I was looking at this EIR report, and then there's also something back here that's, I guess this is Exhibit 3, it says, conflict with applicable congestion management program, and then it says, less than significant impact with mitigation measures incorporated. You know, I mean, this is just, it just doesn't make sense, you know, that that's the case with adding, it says, on the report, something about 3,000, 3,119 average daily trips, you know, where they're going to go someplace, this is just not correct, this EIR report is, just needs to be reviewed. Okay, oh, sorry.
30 seconds more.
Oh, I guess I have nothing else to offer, but the EIR report doesn't, doesn't reflect reality, I mean, that, that intersection down there is just a terrible situation, and this, and these houses are going to get, are going to make it worse, so, you know, I think a couple suggestions, spread the things out, you know, over the Phase 1 and Phase 2, you know, keep, we need houses here, that's for sure, but boy, to put them all in that one location just seems like it's, it's just going to be a disaster for all of us, you know, okay, thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Rod Teague, Jim Bennett, and Diane Pleasant.
Rod Teague, Johnson Avenue, and thank you for hearing us today. So, one of the things I want to point out here is, earlier, it was brought up by the developer that, you know, the specific plan wanted the housing in the Lark District. So, here is your specific plan, and here, I read a couple of things. Lower-intensity residential, it asks for cottage cluster housing, which is generally characterized by detached housing, which is probably the only housing that is semi-incharacter with Los Gatos, but this plan doesn't have any cottage cluster housing. If you go to the other districts, we've got the transition district, which I think there might be a little bit of housing on, I know there's not much, if any. It does call for residential, including condominiums, live-work flats, multifamily flats, multiplexes, row housing, and then we get to the northern district, which it also calls for housing. So, this is our specific plan, this is the rule, this is, this is the guideline that we made. So, you know, what I want people to know here is that the specific plan is yours, it's not theirs, it's not the council's, it belongs to us. It has maximums on there, it has maximum homes, we don't have to go to the maximum homes. So, it's kind of irrelevant, so we need to accept a plan that fits in with the community, the look and feel of the community, and the specific plan did a horrible job defining what the look and feel of Los Gatos is, because I think most of us here would say, the look and feel is probably like our historic area. If you go to the northern district on Los Gatos Boulevard, you'll see a lot of tile roofs, you'll see a lot of Mediterranean-style housing, so we're going to have this entire contrast. So, I think what everybody needs to realize is, don't buy into the scare tactics. I hear the, I hear the developers using things like Rena, and we're going to get our municipality seized by, by the state. It's happened in one case in Pleasanton, and that's because Pleasanton gave them the big, you know what I'm talking about. So, we're standing on the tracks right now, we're staring at a train coming down the tracks, and we can do something about this, but we have people telling us to look at the pretty meadow on the side, so I think it's time for all of us to step off the tracks and do something sensible and reasonable. So, don't accept this current application, please.
Thank you, Mr. Teague, for your comments. We have a question for you from Vice Chair Kane.
You mentioned Pleasanton getting in trouble for what? For not, not abiding by the housing element?
Not abiding by that, yeah, they didn't.
How did they, how did they get in trouble?
Well, they basically told the state, we're not going to provide low-cost housing, and I don't, I don't think that's anything Los Gatos ever intended to do, we chip off our low, low-cost housing when we can, and I think the state, if the state sees that you're making an effort, there's no reason for the state to come after us, but this has been used as a scare tactic all the way through, and, you know, we can do something sensible on the North Forty, put 100 units on the Los Gatos School District side, put another 100 units on the, on the Campbell side, and we can make it high-density, put a couple hundred thousand square feet of commercial in the middle to serve the community. We're not serving just the community by putting 501,000 square feet of commercial, we are serving the valley, and we're turning it into a strip mall, like, you point your finger any direction, you're going to go to, you're going to see the same strip mall, Starbucks options.
Mr. Teague, I didn't mean to reopen, you know, your presentation, my concern is, that I know of a municipality that told the state no, and runs the risk of losing state funding, and then they were successfully sued by a watchdog agency of civilians for not conforming with the housing element. California has to provide housing, and municipalities resist that sometimes, because the requirements are pretty severe, and in the case I'm familiar with, when they resisted, it wasn't the state that got them, it was a watchdog agency that successfully, successfully got them, so that's one of the sword to damocles over our head. That, that's the end of my question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teague. Jim Bennett.
Sick to my stomach, that's what I felt when I walked in here tonight, and I saw that model, sick to my stomach. My neighbor, I live on Johnson, spent two and a half years extending his house from 1,000 square feet to 2,000 square feet on a 9,000-square-foot lot, and you let that go through, sick to my stomach. I can't believe you'd let this go through. I look at you people, and I see you've already made up your mind, and I'm proud that my, our town has come out here to fight, but you've already made up your mind, and if you let this go through, this board will not go down as something, something great. I don't know why you've, I don't know why, what your motivations were for signing up to do this, but you will go down as the people that destroyed my town. Thank you.
I have a question for you, sir.
Yes.
Actually, probably a statement, we have not made up our minds, we are here to listen to all of you, we are reading material, we are writing copious notes, we have not made up our minds.
Fair enough.
I want you to know that.
Fair enough, but that's my opinion.
You're entitled to it, thank you.
All right, Diane Pleasant.
Diana Pleasant, 814 Bignell, Los Gatos, 44 residents of Los Gatos, taught at Los Gatos High School for 29 years, and I'm retired. I just have a simple point that I wish you not to overlook, and that is, I heard the city attorney and the council, and the developers say, that the, that the Los Gatos School District, they've reached an agreement with them, and that's wonderful, but no one has remembered that there's another school district, that's the high school district, and it would be nice if the benevolence of the developers took that into consideration, also, they're over, already over full. So, if you'd put that on your agenda, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pleasant, we appreciate your comments. Jane Sonnenstein, Roberta Goncalves, and Peter Dominick.
Good evening, actually, good night, I guess. I'm Jane Sonnenstein, I live at 239 Plaza La Posada, I live on the west, northwest part of Los Gatos, and I did, I've been a tax-paying resident since 1991, and I did participate in some of the activities about what was going to be the future of the North Forty. It wasn't until I saw the story polls that I really understood, this wasn't what I thought we were talking about, it reminds me of what's happening at Stevens Creek right now in our neighboring city. The difference is Stevens Creek isn't bound by freeways on two sides, so as a resident in my community, I'm bordered by Saratoga and Monty Sereno. I have to use Lark to get across and use, and support the merchants on Los Gatos Boulevard, to use the medical care that's there, and the hospitals, and they've all been used in the years I've lived here. The thing that's not being thought about with the traffic, there's no question that Lark Avenue and Los Gatos Boulevard will be unusable. Unfortunately, my access to Highway 85 is on that route, it's also the same route that Netflix Access is going to be there, because there's a limit to what we can do on Winchester, can only go northbound. So, in order for me to use Highway 85, I have to use this throughway, which is the same access point that the houses are going to be using as well. The density here, I think, is appropriate for the full 40 acres, not for the part that's just being presented. I, I believe that there's some inaccuracies about the number of cars that will be used on the properties, I know millennials usually team up in housing, so a two-bedroom house could have four people living in it, and each of those has a car, I know a one-bedroom house certainly would have two cars, this is going to be a parking lot, and it's going to be the kind of parking lot, there really isn't enough parking, and if we've all experienced what happens at Whole Foods, where someone races because that one spot's available, there are going to be issues with just the residents in the property trying to park their cars, because there won't be enough spaces for the number of cars and the density of the project. In addition, I am going to have to divert, and I have, there's a large neighborhood that I'm in, we're going to have to go down Winchester, down to North Santa Cruz, also Keto Road to Highway 9, which is already difficult, those roads can't really be widened much more, Dave's Avenue had a big issue with traffic, but our traffic is going to have to go down there, because there are going to be times that the gridlock is so bad on Lark, that we just can't go to Lark. So, I want to close with saying, as far as open space and vegetation, I would hope, no matter what the size of this project ends up being, that California native plants are part of the plantation that's considered in terms of trees and shrubbery, and that easements do not, are not open space.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
My name is Roberta Goncalves, I live at 16100 Jasmine Way in Los Gatos, my husband and I did send an email today, but we didn't. My husband and I did send an email today, but we didn't know about the 11:00 AM deadline, so I want to make sure we enter on the record, and I just would like to read it. Thank you, Chair, Planning Commission Chair and Commissioners, for your work. I think nobody would like to be on your shoes today or addressing this, but we are grateful that you are, and you're taking this seriously. My husband and I live in Blossom Manor with our two young children, and we are absolutely opposed to this development. We have both lived in Chicago before, and we both love a big city for what it is. We also enjoy Los Gatos for what it is, and it should never try to look and feel like a big city. One main reason we moved here is how beautiful and quaint this town is, the excellent schools it offers, and the look and feeling of small-town living, while close enough to San Jose, San Francisco, and all they have to offer, but without the challenges those cities face today. The last thing we need in our town is another Santana Row. We already have one. It is in San Jose. Los Gatos doesn't need to try to become San Jose. We can drive about seven minutes and be at Santana Row. Our town already cannot handle all the traffic going to Santa Cruz on weekends or throughout the summer with the current infrastructure and population. Adding the 320 residential units, plus the commercial development, and more families in town, with that structure and planned as is, will only make it worse, significantly worse. It will also make traffic around town and our schools worse than what it already is. This addition would require more roads, more schools at all levels, not just elementary school, but middle and high school. There are no such provisions being proposed, and frankly, just buying land does not pay teacher salaries and administrator salaries. The quality of life, we all have chosen this town for, the great schools, decent amount of traffic, and the character and feel of the town are at stake if this project gets approved as is. Again, we don't need another Santana Row, we don't need to become another, quote, "stop by the highway," unquote. We don't need more traffic, we don't need the overcrowd, to overcrowder already full schools. We ask you to please say no to this development, start from scratch, go back to the planning, and try and listen to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Peter Dominick, Blossom Hill Road. If you're not familiar with Blossom Hill Road, that's the street that everyone speeds down after they get stuck in traffic on the Boulevard. You know, I would like to reiterate what everyone else has said. I am very appreciative of having this forum. I'm very appreciative that you spend your time listening to what we have to say. I think many people said, "On days like today, it seems like almost a thankless job," but we do thank you for giving us this opportunity. One thing that has been made clear tonight is that, you know, the specific plan is the law of the land. That was said many times, it seemed like, at the beginning, and we were reminded of that, that, you know, there's water under the bridge, we have certain things that we have to abide by. And all of us have been coming here trying to tell you what we think, how we think you should interpret that specific plan. What was interesting, though, is that when the developer had their time at the microphone, and they talked about the plan, they were challenged on their concept of what it meant to consider the hillside views. I think that's one of the four key tenets that's in this specific plan. And forgive me for paraphrasing here, but what I heard from the developer was kind of a shrug of the shoulders and said, "Well, we did what we could." And so it feels to me like things have gotten a little bit confused, where the people of this community are being told, "This is the law of the land, you're going to have to live with it." But when the developers came up and were questioned about it, they kind of got away with saying, "Well, we did our best," and no one really pressed them on this. You know, they could pivot their design on a 45-degree angle to better compensate the views of the peaks, and maybe that would sacrifice some of the land, and they wouldn't be able to put as many units on there. But is this about our community, or is it about their development? So that's all I have to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Rhody Firth, David Lawler, and John Eichinger?
Rhody Firth. I live at 15905 Orange Blossom Lane, which is in Blossom Hill Manor. I've lived there for 50 years. I've been fighting this proposed development since the beginning, and it hasn't helped. I haven't been to the Planning Commission a lot, but I've been to the Town Council and written to the paper a lot. I had prepared remarks for tonight, but something the initial woman from the developer said, I think there's something more important, I should say. About five, I've lost track of time, five or six years ago, the citizens of Los Gatos were invited to a meeting by the developers, and I don't know if it was Summerhill or Grosvenor. But there were women in charge of this, and they are almost always at the Town Council, but they're not here tonight, so I don't know if they're still employed by them or not. We had this huge meeting with 50 or 75 citizens. They had big, white pieces of paper that they glued on the wall and asked us for suggestions. So they wrote down everything we said, and we were just dumbfounded that a developer cared what the citizens thought. So then they invited us about a month later to come back to hear the results of what we'd said. There wasn't one single word in their proposal that we had advised. They said, "Some people wanted some of the orchard, so we've planted trees here and trees there." And they had pictures. I don't know if they were these exact pictures, but they had pictures of the development. So they knew when they asked us for our opinion that they didn't care about our opinion. I'm only saying that because I don't trust them. I can't trust them after that kind of behavior. And I should also tell you that today I went to the Lark Avenue car wash to get my car washed, and I had to go twice, because the first time, I couldn't, with the traffic, get into the car wash. So this afternoon I went, I got in, got my car washed, and then I couldn't come out.[1076.65][1076.65](Laughter). I mean, the traffic on Lark Avenue is just, I thought, "Well, I'll just have to sleep at the car wash."[1086.48][1086.48](Laughter). Finally, finally, some good citizens saw the problem and let us out. But when they say the traffic is not going to be impacted by this project, that just can't be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Firth.
Hi. David Lawler, 148 Potomac. So just three points. I mean, this is the Planning Commission, I guess, so is Los Gatos, planning and risk. First of all, you've heard a lot today about what Los Gatos is or isn't, and what it should be, and what it shouldn't be, and what it should be, or whatever. You know, there's a character and a feel to a town which you can get by living there. And I've lived here, I don't consider myself a long-term resident, I've only lived here 22 years. My neighbor was born in Los Gatos, his parents grew up here. There's a lot of people who've lived here a long time. Now, that's going to change, I understand that. But the town's actually about the citizens, and what they want, how they feel about the city. And this town basically has changed. We've seen the traffic going up, we've seen development, you know, like Bluebird Lane, they're high-density, and we've seen what that has done to our traffic. So that's what Los Gatos is. It's not that, it's the town that we have, and we've seen these new developments coming in, and we've seen the negatives that come with them. The second thing is planning, and this is all, this is all about. There has to be a plan. There's a general plan, there's a specific plan, there's the North Forty Plan, then there's this plan. This plan is actually the South 22 Plan, not the North Forty Plan, because we don't know what the North Forty Plan is. There is a specific plan, but this isn't it. I don't know who is good enough to actually put up here what the three elements of the North Forty were supposed to be, but this doesn't meet that criteria. In case you need to vote on whether or not you're going to approve it, take that into account. But it actually isn't there. You know, so if you look at it, what we have is, there's a recommendation for schooling, not a requirement, in the specific plan. The schools are overcrowded, there's no doubt, nobody will deny that. Right? And they're getting worse. We just passed a bond measure, which is going to go and expand the high school, it's expanded out, I think, the middle school twice, Fisher twice, right? And we're going to have to do it again. We're going to pay. We're going to pay. And that leads to the third part, though, which is risk. There's Los Gatos, there's planning, and there's risk. Right? And the risk here is asymmetrical. Asymmetrical, and the developer will take the profits, figure a million dollars a unit, $250 million, take the profits, $300 to develop per square foot, lots of money, they're gone. They don't even live in the town. We will be stuck if their estimate of traffic is wrong. You know what their estimate was? I was here a month ago, and I said, "How many cars do you expect in this development, the one right here?" 103, I think, was the number. I may be off by a couple. 100! That's insane! All right? So I've got 30 seconds left, but their numbers are wrong. I know the EIR, I'm told by the lawyer, is set in stone, but it's not. The congestion is real. Right? We have school density that is there. We're going to have to pay the risks. This town, the citizens, which is Los Gatos, plan or no plan, we need a plan so we don't have to get stuck with the bill when the developer's long gone. We'll have the traffic, we'll have the congested schools, and we'll have nothing to do about it, and the millions of dollars will be gone out of this town. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. We do have, do you have a question, Vice Chair Kane? Thank you. No questions.
Okay. Hi. My name is John Eichinger. I live at 637 San Benito Avenue, 42-year resident of Los Gatos. I'm a real estate broker. Now, a lot of real estate agents and brokers would be salivating over 300 more units to sell, more inventory, but I'm not. I'm adamantly opposed to this project. My office is on Los Gatos Boulevard, at 455 Los Gatos Boulevard, directly across from the Valero gas station near Van Meter School. And literally, I sit with a picture window right next to me, and Los Gatos Boulevard is 15 feet away. I sit, I joke with people that I sit on Los Gatos Boulevard. So I have a very intimate view every day of the traffic on Los Gatos Boulevard, and it's horrible. Everybody here knows it. Any environmental impact report that was paid for by the developers, is that correct? Paid for by the developers, should be thrown in the trash. We should have an environmental impact report that is unbiased, not paid for by the developers, that addresses the real issues, because I believe that any one of you up here, any one of you will know that 300 more units is going to impact traffic. And any environmental report that says it won't should be thrown in the trash. The recommendations by staff, I know you've put a lot of work into this staff report, but on page 19, you recommend, you say you can't make a decision tonight, but you recommend that you should accept the certified EIR. You should not accept the certified EIR because it was paid for by the developers. That's called a fox in the hen house. We've all seen the model of Phase 1, we see the story polls for Phase 2. I'm sure the developers have sketches, at least, of what Phase 2 and Phase 3 look like. Let's see the story polls for Phase 2 and Phase 3, so that the town can really understand the impact. Let's see the plans and the discussion for Phase 2 and Phase 3. I'm sure the developers have some plans and sketches for them already. Let's see them. Okay? That's it. I think the specific plan should be brought up on the ballot in November.
All right.
Thank you very much for your service. I don't envy you one bit. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to ask you all to please refrain from the clapping and cheering as we continue on. We've got Caroline Lee, Eric Eastlin, and Jason Farwell. Did you have a question?
I have a question.
Okay. We have a question. Mr. Eichinger?
No, it's, did you say that you sat 15 feet from Los Gatos Boulevard?
Yes, 15 feet.
You can come to the podium, please.
No, it's okay. I'm just telling you, that could be a violation of the setback. Not helping.[1510.61][1510.61](Laughter).
Maybe it's 20 feet.
We will be diligent about this. All right.
I'm 10 feet from the sidewalk. 10 feet from the sidewalk.
Hi there. My name's Caroline Lee. I live at 224 Creekside Village, and I've been a 10-year, because that's not very long, a 10-year resident of Los Gatos. I would like to make this my home. And I am not a millennial, or whatever that's called, so I'm a little older than that. I want to talk about what high-density housing is and the impact it's had on me. Creekside Village is at the corner of 9 and 17. It's 72 homes that are within a very small area. It was an old mobile home park that got converted to single-family homes. I love living in Los Gatos, but in this neighborhood, this was very much a developer-centric neighborhood. I do have a home, but if I go like this, I can touch, well, the fence will come to about here on the side, and if I do this one more time, I can touch the other house. That's how close we are together. We have 22 parking spaces in our community for 72 homes. This doesn't work for us. People park outside of our neighborhood and onto the neighboring streets. I do feel bad for the residents, and when I look at the North Forty and the density there, and hear about the cars, and, you know, 100 cars, it's not going to be 100 cars. Down here, we all have a car. We have more than one car per home, and it gets really difficult. I don't believe that this is going to solve any problems. The other thing I'd like to say about the traffic, I work a lot, I come home, I just want to have a place to relax. I have a situation where every month I have to go get a blood test. I do this on a Saturday morning. I've gotten it down to the point where I know if I make an appointment, I can get in and out of there. It takes me five minutes to get there, 10 minutes to get my blood test, and 40 minutes to get home. It's a plan and an ordeal to do this, and it shouldn't have to be that way. It's the traffic that's difficult. I know I can change and ride my bike, but I'd like to be able to just drive my car to where I need to go, because it's a city or a town I live in that affords me to do this. And then the final thing that I'd like you guys to, you know, also consider is, I know we're under, I don't envy you for your job or your role, I appreciate that you've stepped up to plan our city, but I do wish to have you consider what guidelines that you have been given, to please question them, to please challenge them, and to please start to, you know, what you think are the right parameters for us, or for you in your role, and for us as citizens of Los Gatos. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Mr. Eastlin?
Hi. My name is Eric Eastlin. I live at 201 Charter Oaks Circle. I might be the youngest person at the podium today. I do represent the millennial demographic that the developer is aiming towards, and I will say that the proposed housing is attractive to me in my current situation. But as a resident of North Los Gatos, and also a prospective teacher at Los Gatos High School, there are some concerns with regards to the traffic and the schools. I was here at this podium last year with the Albright Project, and I witnessed what the town and the developer came to a so-called compromise with that development, and I see this particular plan leading down a very similar, very similar path to that. Being a student teacher at Westmont, I've learned very quickly that if you give an inch, students will take a mile. And I see that the developers have used the language in the specific plan to take that mile with the language that people have cited, and what has been brought to the board and in the foyer today. I ask that you, as the commission, do the same to use the language to your... I, I ask that you, as the commission, do the same, to use the language to your advantage to service the needs and the wants of the people of this town. I, I do think that we can come to some sort of compromise with, with housing. Housing is an issue in this town with traffic and with the schools. I want to be able to live in this town without having to stay at my, the house that my mama so graciously kind of let, let me live in when she's, after she moved out with my stepdad. I'd like to be able to live here and be a part of the community. So, please ask that you, that you keep all the perspectives in mind, both, both the, all the middle-aged people who've lived here for 40 years, and, and the young millennials like me who want to, to stay here. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming forward with your comments. Jason Farwell?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Jason Farwell, 18 Park Avenue. I've, I've been following this for a lot of years, and I've been fighting it from, from day one. And my, my general concern that got me involved in this whole process was what this development was going to do, going to do to our downtown. And full disclosure, I'm, I'm a commercial property owner. My family owns a, a few parcels downtown, and I'm very concerned as to what the impact of this development will have on our, on our downtown. Ed Rathman and I, he's the owner of Willow Street and Main Street Burgers, have met time and time again over the years with our elected officials. We've expressed, you know, essentially every concern that's been raised here today, and they still certified it. They still certified the EIR. They still approved the specific plan. I don't know why. But they did. And to a certain extent, our hands are tied at this point. I, I would just urge you, the public, to reach out to your elected officials and express your disdain for what has occurred, and encourage them to take whatever action they can as the elected officials and, and governing body of our town, to take action and to hear your demands. We are owed that. This project will change the landscape of our community forever. It, it is going to devastate our downtown. There are some that will disagree with me. But I, I'm absolutely certain that the merchants downtown will be impacted tremendously. And, and I, and I do know that the North 40 is encouraging certain business owners downtown to move out to their development. I know that there have been those hands extended to encourage that move, further drawing what I consider to be a very important aspect of our town, our downtown. And it will impact it. So, I, I will leave you with that. I appreciate your time. I appreciate your, your consideration, and thank you.
Mr. Farwell, we have a question from Commissioner Hudes.
Yeah, thank you for your comments in this area, which we haven't heard a lot about tonight. And I think we haven't heard a lot about it because we've been talking about Phase 1, because that's the application that's, you know, in front of us today. So, I would appreciate if you have any further insight into the Phase 1 retail proposal and the impact that that will have, including the Market Hall, the shops, the restaurants. Is that what you're most concerned about? Or do you have specific concerns about Phase 1 that we should consider?
Sure. Yeah, I, I think the, the Market Hall concept is a very attractive concept. The lure of the Market Hall, I think, will draw folks from our downtown to, to the Market Hall. I think, I think the one complaint I've had from day one was kind of the unfairness between the North 40 and downtown. So, the, the downtown district has a lot of regulations surrounding the particular uses that, that occur down there. So, any food use, any use of alcohol requires a conditional use permit. Well, the North 40 has zero restrictions. There are no CUPs required for the North 40. So, they, they pick and choose who goes in there, and, and the town has no say. Literally no say. I, I don't know why. I don't know why. They, they agreed to that. I, I expressed time and time again my concern on that point, but it was ignored. So, so it's, it's really a fairness issue. We have a formula restriction on downtown, right? Where, where formula stores can't come into downtown without a CUP. Well, that doesn't apply to the North 40. So, I, I just don't understand the, the unequal division here of, of the playing field. It, it seems really one-sided. But, but, but again, you'll hear the council, they're, they're constantly championing the mom-and-pop store owner of downtown, but this is the knife in their heart. I, I have done some calcs, just some rough calcs. Downtown is roughly, taking out the banks, downtown is roughly 230, 240,000 square feet of retail space. The total North 40 calls for over 500,000. It's nearly double what we have downtown. I, I think, I think that speaks for itself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farwell.
Thank you.
Patricia Ernstrom, Brian Melachack, and Fiona Greenland.
Patricia Ernstrom, Bachman Avenue. As have others mentioned tonight, I, I've been at a lot of the meetings and attended, back to the first time when we were meeting over at the, at the Police Department. And since that time and in those early meetings, a lot of people have alluded to the fact that, you know, the plan is just different from, from all of the input that we gave. And somehow, this project has just continued to be steamrolled ahead at every turn, regardless of the disastrous impacts that we all know are, we're experiencing them now, and it's only going to get worse, regardless of what residents have been objecting to. And it is so disheartening and so discouraging. And I think we all feel here, what do we do? We need your help. I was born in Los Gatos. This is like a Dave's Avenue reunion that we're having here tonight. But it's, it's, you know, we've heard from legal counsel what we can't do, and I guess the question is, what can we do? People have talked about, you know, it's been going on a long time, and we've been part of that. And just because it's been going on a long time, it's not too late, and it can't be too late. Because as other people said, we are never going to get this back. It is going to be forever. We must take into account the other developments that have passed but have not yet been built. It is layer upon layer upon layer. In our household, we refer to traffic Armageddon. And that's on a weekend, I can't get to see my 88-year-old father because I can't get from my house on Bachman Avenue to his house off of Winchester and get there and know that I can get home in 30 minutes. So, I'm making decisions about, and, and the, the role play that we heard earlier, we all kind of chuckled, tongue-in-cheek, ha-ha funny. That's reality, and that's what everybody's experiencing. And the, the developers are, again, going to take the money and be out of town. As we've heard tonight, this is only one parcel. And somebody mentioned, and I think it was either in the report, that it's 13 to 14 parcels. So, the Grosvenor Development is one part of that, and then there are all of those other independent pieces. And without seeing the whole thing, how do we possibly make a decision here tonight? When this doesn't work, when all of the impacts that we're experiencing now and all of the future impacts that we know are coming, what then? What do we, as citizens of Los Gatos, what do we do? Who do we turn to? Please, please help us.
Hi. Brian Meckachuck, 55 Roberts Road. I just want to make three quick points. The first one underscores what you've heard a lot tonight, which is taking an integrated approach to this development. And if you're looking for certain areas where you can have a finding that, that doesn't support the, the acceptance of this, I think it's not knowing what the total impact is. And I really do think that you have to look at the big picture, what's going on in the North 40. So, that's my first point. My second point is, throughout Los Gatos, people are putting things underground. They're putting in basements and that sort of thing. I didn't see anything underground here. It's all basic, the lowest-cost construction, put it above ground or at grade. You know, you, you want to get rid of some height, put it underground. My third point is, when I looked at the models and I, and I, outside, I think, wow, there's a lot of roof space there. I didn't see any solar on there. Trivial point, but, you know, there's, there's a few kilowatts there. Anyway, so, my three points. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 16588 Oleander Avenue, Los Gatos. Dear Commissioners, first of all, thank you very much for your patience this evening and for your time. The document that you see here I'm referring to comes from the North 40 proposal by the developer. You can see the page number. I've enlarged it a bit. And I just wanted to highlight, or I would say contest, the concept that this development is indeed for young professionals. If you're marketing for young professionals, it refers to the document that, it says to note that the floor pan, that dens on all units are noted as not just dens, but optional bedrooms. So, if you look down this list, I'm sure you can see that many of these rooms, many of these bedrooms are for two-plus den or one-plus den. I would contest that that's not then being marketed for young professionals. So, this is saying that two-plus, two-plus bedroom units, there's going to be 189. And as you mentioned earlier, that's going to be 189 of the 260 proposed units. As all other high-density housing has shown in Los Gatos Union School Districts, families are going to purchase these units. The developer claims that they are marketing to young professionals. And the other point also proposed on the North 40, this is from the North 40 Project Summary and Justification, it says that, this is my drawing of the cars, I apologize. But this is, if you look through the plans, this is the drawings that they have for all the plans. And the idea is that they're assuming maybe young professionals are going to share with other young professionals. But the keys are going to be held in a communal area, and whichever car is there first, you would take that car. Well, I know in my family, we have one driveway, and I take my car, my husband takes his, and that's how it works. We don't share the cars. So, I would contest again that this is for a fa, I mean, we do share cars because we're a family. I don't think that young professionals are going to let their friends drive their other cars, and I could be wrong. So, just to, to, just to reiterate, the two points that I'm really trying to make here at this late time in the evening is that if you really are marketing to young professionals, you don't need more than two bedrooms or tandem parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I will be calling our last three speaker cards. We've made it. Lee Quintana, I'm sorry, four. Lee Quintana, Superintendent Diana Abadi, and Ingrid Oakley-Gervan.
There's just so much to say that I'm not going to have time for, so I'm going to try to be short, and I will send you my other comments by a letter. First, I'd like to, I grew, let me start by saying, I guess I forgot my name, Lee Quintana, 5 Palm Avenue. I'm going to start by saying that, as a child, I lived for several years on my grandparents' walnut orchard, and it was a wonderful time in my life. So, I thank the Yucys for letting me see a walnut orchard practically every day of my life and relive my happy childhood from there. The other comment I wanted to make about walnuts as street trees or trees to be used in, in the North 40 is that they are extremely messy, and they stain your clothes. They would stain sidewalks, et cetera. So, just, that's as a consideration. The other thing is, I would like to add some, a little bit of history and add the warning that my husband always tells me, be careful what you wish for unintended consequences. I've been involved in this town for the last 25 years, eight as a planning commissioner. I voted against many of the projects that are now being cited as problems, the original Netflix. I can name several others. I was never considered a friend of the development community. I was concerned about keeping the character of Los Gatos. But life does change. We can't stand still. When I refer to history, I'm going all the way back to when the town adopted their 85 element and when they worked with the state and the county on the 85 freeway. This town and its citizens did not want a full interchange at 85. The fact that we don't have that interchange has greatly affected the town's ability to handle traffic. There is no longer any opportunity to have that interchange because we built Albright on part of what could have been used as additional entrances to the freeway, and we built part of the original Netflix on property that was identified as a transit center for the community. So, what I'm saying is that, and I'm going to go back to, real fast, the history of the first draft on, on this project, on which I worked. It came to the council. The citizens came out in droves, saying, "We don't like that." That plan did not have any housing on it. That plan did not have any medical on it. It was 5,000 square feet of commercial and retail. My, what I'm trying to get at is that we have been planning the North 40 for 40 years, and we've never really gotten there. And every time it gets postponed, something happens on the North 40 that limits what you can do with it next. All the newer developments on the Boulevard prevent a better plan for the North 40-specific plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Quintana. Appreciate the comments.
And you'll hear more from me. I'm just going to say that because I think there were a lot of mis, misfacts stated that should be corrected.
Good evening, Chair, Planning Commissioners, Town Staff, and the community members. I am Diana Abadi, the Superintendent of the Los Gatos Union School District. And with me this evening is one of our trustees from our Board of Trustees, Emmy Eto. And we're here to speak on behalf of the Los Gatos Board of Trustees and answer any of your questions. So, I'm going to turn it over to Emmy Eto.
We represent the needs of our students in grades kindergarten through eighth grade. On behalf of the Los Gatos Union School District Board, I would like to update the planning commission on the school district's agreement with the North 40 developers. In the spring of 2015, the school district and the developers signed an unprecedented agreement to mitigate the effects of the student population growth as a result of housing construction in the North 40. The developers agreed to either provide a two-acre parcel of land or work with the district to acquire land for a new school in Los Gatos, or pay additional mitigation fees above SB 500. fees above SB 50 for every entitled market rate home in our boundaries. If you would like to read the agreement, it can be found on our website under the April 13, 2015 board meeting. In addition, the district is in regular communication with the developers, and we would like to thank the collaboration with the Planning Commission and the Town Council for the considerations of the needs of the students. We know how difficult this decision is. We will continue to work with all constituents to welcome all children to our schools. We appreciate everyone's support. Thank you.
I also want to just thank the Planning Commissioners for your public support. We know, I know it's a volunteer position, so just thank you. We've had late-night meetings, we probably have had the best collaboration we've had in my five years here as a service as the Superintendent of Los Gatos, and I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kane.
Ms. or Dr. Abadi?
It's Dr. Abadi, but I'll take Diana, anything's fine.
Are you satisfied with the agreement we'll provide for the, for the additional students, and how many additional students are projected?
So yes, we are very satisfied by the number of the student gener, we use the student generation rate, and we estimated somewhere between 100 and 120 students for this development. And it's based on our student generation rate, which is roughly about a .4, I think was the last time I looked, or .38. So based on that, yes, we are, we're very pleased if, working with the developers, we're into educating, they're into land development, if they can work with us and to help us secure that property, we'll make something work for us.
If the property is secured, do you have the funds for the facility?
We do not have the existing funds for this facility, but we have funds to purchase additional land. So if they were to secure to, help us find a parcel above two acres, we already have money set aside to pay for that, or to finance that. We don't plan to build a new site, probably for the next probably five to 10 years, so we're, at least we'd go into planning stages. So we're trying to be very visionary and look for the future, and not make the mistakes the district did years ago. So if we can secure public land or some private land to do that, we're planning for growth for, in five, 10, 15 years. That's what we're trying to do.
So the new facility is, you just said it, five, 10 years out?
It would be if we needed to build, yeah, we're not planning it in the next five years.
What would we do in the meantime?
So we've already mitigated for that. We've done a couple of things. We've been, we've built Lexington School, and our demographic study shows that we won't have additional growth in our elementary, and it will take till 2022 to fill up Lexington School. So just for that sake, that's why we've built that, we've up scoped that school, so it has a capacity of about 300 students. It roughly has 160 right now. Middle school has, we've already mitigated for the middle school for this point, and we've also built a gym to facilitate the needs of that expanded growth. So the gym project, which is called our sports complex, added four additional teaching spaces for us, freeing up four classrooms. So we were able to do that, that's why we call it our sports complex. So it's not just a gym, it actually has some dance and fitness classrooms to make up for other classrooms that we need for math and science. So we think we're ready for that for the next five years, too.
Have similar arrangements been made for the high school?
I can't speak for the high school, it's a different district than us. We follow, they have similar demographics as we do, they're, it's the mobility, mobility rate, so as they increase in our school, they're going to increase to the high school, but I, we don't make recommendations or plan for them.
Well, thank you for attending, and thank you for being so patient with us at this late hour.
Welcome. Commissioner Hudes.
Thank you again. Will the 120 students, possible 120, be going to Lexington School?
No, so you have to think about 120 students K8, so they're going to be dispersed in all of our grades, so we're not going to move 120. That could be roughly, depending on where the numbers are coming in, it could be 60 in the elementary and 60 in our middle school. So you just don't know where they are. They don't come in clean numbers, so you would think, they don't come all kindergarten. So we really look at the census data, and currently the census, census data is showing this flat in growth in, for our kindergarten grade, but we're seeing a lot more mobility. So what that means is seniors moving out of their current homes, they're moving to other places, and families moving into there. So we're not getting, we're getting kids from all different grades, so they wouldn't be just one school, one grade. So we have space mostly at Lexington to do that, but it would be based on wherever else we do have space.
So some of them would go to Lexington?
Some would go, the majority would go to Lexington, and they would go wherever else we have space.
Okay. One other follow-up, in terms of the, the space needed for a school. Now, I know five years sounds like it's a long way, but it's, you know, time goes pretty quickly sometimes, and it's difficult to secure real estate. How many acres, what space do you think you would need? Is the two acre, two acres adequate?
So we could build a school the size of Lexington, which is roughly 300 students on a two-acre parcel. There are schools that look like that. They are very different than Los Gatos schools. Think about it, it doesn't have as much green space. Most of our elementary schools have anywhere between five and eight acres, our middle school has 14 acres. But there are schools, given what's happened in California, you can see them, there's lots of things on the websites, under the Department of State Architects, you can find schools. It would be a school that looks kind of two stories flat up with a playground in front and parking in front of that. We would make that work, we would love more land, which is why we've put monies aside to do that. If we could find a two-and-a-half, three-acre parcel, we'll make that work, too. Any type of shared partnership, we would love to do that, too, especially if it were next to a park, a town, something that the town owns, too. But again, we're working with all the entities to try to get that to work.
So I did a little research on it, and I know there's not a lot of good data available, but there's a publication called The Guide to School Site Analysis and Development from the California Department of Education. And it says that for a school of 450, the acres, according to the 2,000 figures, was 9.6 acres. That's pretty far from two acres.
They're recommended guidelines, so yes, they are, they are guidelines, they're not mandated. So think about schools in San Francisco, that, there are no schools that are nine-and-a-half acres. You're just, you're just thinking about a difference, different type of school. A two-acre parcel will give you a blacktop and a parking space. It will not give you the green space and the soccer fields and the baseball fields that the other schools have. So to your point, we would love that if we could find it, but we could make a two-plus acre parcel work.
But it would be significantly different than the schools in the district today.
It would look, yes, it would not be the feel of, of our Dave's School, and our Van Blossom Hill School, and our Viator, but land is very expensive. So we will educate them, we will do what we can, and we'll make it work. Please know that there are schools that look like it, and they don't, they're not just commercial buildings that have been converted to schools. They, there are playground schools, these are schools that look like elementaries. I would say Lexington being the closest one, that looks like a school that has two stories, the elementary's the K1's on the down, K1, 2's on the ground floor, 3, 4, 5 on the upstairs, and a playground in front with parking. They're very straight, kind of very square and boxy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Dr. Ingrid Oakley-Gervan. I'm a parent of a high school senior and an incoming, graduating eighth grader incoming to the middle school. So I think what we're looking for are options to redirect the legacy for Los Gatos. Do we want this urban plan, or do we want our town plan? So I would put forth that there's a sustainable agricultural lands conservation program. I've heard many of the commissioners asking for options, and this one is a great one. Can be found at conservation.ca.gov. More than $40 million generated from the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund, specifically part of the Division of Land Resources for Protection Programs to Conserve California Open Space Resources. So I'd like you guys to look at that, and to research that a little bit and think about it. Another option is the Williams Act, that was started in 1965. So what you do is you establish a contract, can be done by a board or a council, and what they determine is the unique characteristic of the agricultural enterprise in the area calls for establishment of a preserve, if it's consistent with the general plan. This is a 10-year contract. So I'd also request that you look into that. So my question to legal is, I've heard a lot of, we can't do this, we're forced into this. My perspective is, all these people and the ones who've been here the entire night, we all pay the salary for the Town Council legal team, is my understanding. So I'd like you to hear what solutions there might be to redirect this pathway, so that the legacy is not one, as Diana just mentioned, for an urban elementary school. I don't really think that that's what we want. Who wants their kids running around in a blacktop? Really? I don't think that's what Los Gatos wants. There's no discussion of what the high school is impacted. I can tell you the middle school is impacted, it's going to get more so. And the high school, there's no question of how are we going to build out in that space if you have more kids? It's just a numbers game, it's simple population. You have X number of parking spots, X number of cars, just like you have X number of kids and X number of seats, you cannot go further than that. So I think it's really important that you all look at this holistically. I understand this is phase one, there's two, three, four, who knows how many more. What is the total impact? The total aggregation? If you're looking at, from a health perspective, at somebody's health, you don't just say, what's your diet like? You say, what's your physical activity like? What's your stress like? What's your genetics like? You look at the whole picture. I'm asking you to do this for our town. Thank you.
Shannon Sussick, followed by John Shepherd. And if I don't get any more cards after that, we've gone through all the cards.
I'm really honored to, to speak again. Almost a bookend, but also just on behalf of some of the residents, and so happy that so many people came out, even though this is such a difficult issue. We people, I'm not going to chastise anyone for not being here for 10 years in all the meetings, because not everybody can do that. But God bless the people that have come out for the very first time, and have lived here for 40 years. I, I just think that that's amazing, and it's, it's a part of our process, and it's one of the good things. And I also already thanked you, and in advance, because it's going to be a tough, a tough road ahead. But the most important thing that we can accomplish tonight, and in the weeks and months, and it could be years, is to not only unite as a town and community, but to adhere to the vision and the purpose of our general plan, and the North Forty specific plan. While it likely won't happen, and I have been exploring on my own some other options, it would be great for a foundation to come, and Mark Zuckerberg buy that orchard, and have it be a camp for kids to come from all over the, I mean, or it could be Hidden Villa or Arden Park in Fremont. There's so many amazing things that we could do with that piece of land, and not sell it and bulldoze it. It's, it, you know, like Roy said, I mean, I think a lot of people are upset about it. But there's a couple things I want to mention, and it's time, and it's late, and it's about the time. I think that this application, one of the largest that the, the commission has ever seen, deserved at least one study session. That's a tremendous amount of material to go over. Not all the letters were in the packets, you guys were given things on Thursday, Friday, before a holiday weekend. I think that, I think that the commission and the town deserve that. And we have heard things that we can't do, supposedly, but there's a lot of things that were not specified in the North Forty Plan that you have the discretion and authority to look at. There's no footprint. It does not have to be this way. We don't have to, there's a lot of leeway with where the housing can go, with where the commercial can go. And again, they're maximums. Yes, the developer wants to build to the maximum, because that's how you make the maximum amount of money. But is that what the town wants? Is that what we need? Is that what our infrastructure can take? It's, just as it's taken years for those walnut trees to grow, and the Yuki family has had that, it could take that long for the town to approve an application. Once the orchards are turned over and concrete is poured, this land is gone forever, as is the agriculture and the history, and we know that. So I'm hoping that the citizens that are here, and that the Town Council next week will demand that this be continued until all the story poles are up. We need to know the whole story, can't just be part of it, can't be half the story poles and the height. My last sentence was really good.
Very quickly, actually, Vice Chair Kane has a question for you, so maybe we can incorporate that.
You have to ask questions. What was your last statement?
Oh.
I knew that was coming.
I was going to say, there's so many good things that can be accomplished with this unprecedented site. Let's take our time. This needs to be done right, and good things take time. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Our last speaker is John Shepherdson.
John Shepherdson, 120Ocrim. So this is, has been in my home, and it's a board that I created with the Netflix project. And it states that 350,000 square feet of office space was the environmentally superior alternative. The developer wanted 550, and the Town Council approved 485. We could have kept Netflix, and we could have had the best land use, we could have reduced the traffic impacts, we could have lowered the heights, and we could have done it at 350. And the environmentally, environmental impact report was telling us that. So we made a mistake, in my opinion, but we can learn from this, because that's history now. But what we can do, and let me go here. Well, I just have a little graph here of the three main arteries into town, Highway 17, we know that's jammed up. We've got Netflix on Winchester Boulevard, that's going to get jammed up. And now we have this other last artery, Los Gatos Boulevard. If we aren't wise about this, that artery is also going to get clogged, and then it's just going to, just spread, it's going to be really bad. So my solution idea is, middle ground between the developers' proposal, by the way, I think they've been class acts in my dealings with them, and I'll state that on the record. So scale back the project, mix single family with high density, that's what Los Gatos is already. School buses, I think this is a larger issue, but we should have school buses, and we could reduce 30% of the traffic in town. Safe routes to schools, protected bike lanes, smart traffic lights, reduce traffic by 25%. The RENA, so we got to have some of this high density to deal with our RENA requirements. And we spread the housing across the project, so we put it in Los Gatos School Districts, some, and the Union School Districts. That, to me, is reflective of Los Gatos. And we don't take the whole brunt, and we mix it up, and we reduce the scale, and we do it in a way, frankly, that the developer can make a profit. Because we all, we live in homes that were made by developers, right? We need developers, and they're not necessarily an enemy. They have a profit motive, we have our interests. So let's see if we can find a middle ground here where we can work with each other. And lastly, I applaud your efforts, and I say bravo to the people that, that came here tonight to express their views. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have one more speaker? I will need a speaker card from you.
Thank you for indulging me. Madam Chairwoman, you have my speaker card, you called me out as Ray, but I'm Pat Kearns, 7 West Central, I was the third name.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I just didn't respond.
Okay, well, you can now.
Okay. When I filled it out, if you look at it, it said, give my city, state, and zip, not my town. So I corrected that. And I was afraid that that was a fait accompli, that we are changing the character of our Los Gatos. There's been a lot of wisdom in the room here tonight, and I have been moved by it. And when I approach a problem, and I involve an attorney, I want the attorney's opinion. And I want the opinion to help me to achieve my goals. And I think we've heard a lot of comments about what the town wants, and I don't believe the attorney does work for us. I think the attorney's fiduciary responsibility is to the town, to the commission, and to the council. And I think that that's right. I think that the attorney can give the council and the commission his or her opinion, but I think the town can also approach other solutions. And to let an environmental impact report that everybody knows on its face is false, at least in terms of traffic, doesn't seem right. So I would suggest that we commission another environmental impact report, independent of the council, independent of the commission, the citizens of Los Gatos, and file it with the commission or the council, and ask you to consider it, or perhaps even certify in it. None of this may be possible, but it's logical that the citizens can voice their opinion with a purchased environmental impact report. And I would volunteer, I'm not a community advocate, but I would volunteer my email to kind of focus the energy that's been discussed here tonight, so that... been discussed here tonight so that somebody could start to organize an approach to compromise. I think that was the wisest thing that was said tonight. And that is protime.net, info at protime.net. And I will try to pass whatever comments come in along to a community leader and the council and, and the town so that this energy could be focused on compromised. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you.
Did you find my card?
I did. Yes, you were third, just like you said. All right. I am closing the public comment period with the exception of the applicant. It's past 11:00, so I'm looking to the commissioners for a motion to continue past 11:30. Commissioner O'Donnell?
The, they have five minutes now? Is that correct?
They would have five minutes.
So we can take that vote now and obviously if we get close to that, we can revote if we think that's indicated. But I would certainly move that we extend our meeting to 11:30.
Do we have a second?
Two.
Okay, and that would be if we go past 11:30, not to 11:30.
Well, at this moment, we're, we're trying just to go to 11:30 and then we'll see where we are. So I don't need a motion, is what you're telling me. Okay.
Okay, we don't need a motion. All right. At this point in time, I will be calling the applicant and their team back up. They will have five minutes to address the commission with further comments.
Well, all right, to rebut. I appreciate the time, Madam Chair. Because of the limited time that we have, there's a lot of things we can go over. This will not be a popular move. I understand that. But we're going to have Barbara Kouts, our attorney, provide some statements.
Hello, Chair and members of the, excuse me, I have a bit of a cold, and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Barbara Kouts. I'm a partner at the Law Firm of Gold, Farben, Lippman, and I'm representing Grosvenor in sunny Summer Hill. So the state legislature has decided that housing is a matter of vital statewide importance and there's increasing concern at the state legislature level about the critical housing shortage in the Bay Area and particularly in areas like the Silicon Valley, which have had huge job growth with employers like Netflix and Apple while expressing great opposition to housing growth. And so there's a whole variety of state laws that are intended to essentially require cities to approve housing. One is the housing element. And as has already been said, the city promised to have on the North Forty site, 270 units at 20 units per acre by right, meaning all that can be, a non-discretionary approval where you only look at design guidelines. In addition, there's another statute entitled the Housing Accountability Act. And there's a provision of that, although much of that relates to affordable housing, there's a provision of that that applies to housing developments in general. And that states that when a proposed housing development project complies with applicable objective general plan and zoning standards, including design review standards, in effect at the time the housing development project's application is determined to be complete, a city cannot either reduce the density or deny the project unless it makes very specific findings that the project would have a specific adverse impact based on significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective identified written public health or safety standards as existed on the date that the application was deemed complete and there's no way to mitigate those impacts. It's extremely difficult finding to make and frankly, I don't know any community that has been able to make that. So in terms of, so yes, it is correct that the council could change the specific plan and could change the housing element, but those changes could not apply to this project because it has already been found to be complete. And you must look at this project based on the housing element, the general plan, the zoning, which basically consists of the specific plan in effect right now. The specific plan does not have any requirements that the 20 units per acre be spread out over the site. There is no requirement that a plan be submitted for the entire site. Actually, the specific plan was intended to take care of, you know, planning for the entire site because there are many different property owners there. And it cannot be, you cannot make your decision based on subjective standards. You must make your decision based on objective, objective standards that are contained there. Let's see. A second point that was raised has to do with housing elements. There was a comment that Hillsborough and Los Altos had paid their way out of housing element conformance. That's not correct. They both have housing elements that have been approved by the state. In Pleasanton, which maybe is an example, there was a voter adopted growth cap and the city refused to do additional zoning that was required, like the, like what's required in your housing element. Eventually, after many years of fighting it, the city ended up paying $2 million to the attorneys for the plaintiffs. In addition, they were required to do all the zoning under a lot of scrutiny from the various, you know, the plaintiffs and various advocacy, advocacy groups. And really ended up, you know, having much less control over the zoning than they would have if they had just done it themselves. Thirdly, there, there have been comments that the city does not need to approve the maximum number of homes being proposed. Density bonuses are not a discretionary approval. I recognize your ordinance has findings, but that's inconsistent with state law because it would make the, it would make the approval discretionary. And lastly, in terms of the EIR, the EIR did consider a lot of future development on the site. You know, I'm sure we'll, we'll provide some additional information about that. But it, I'm sorry, it considered future development off the site. So with that, I think that's my five minutes.
Can you also fill out a speaker card for us?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner O'Donnell?
This is not a question. This is directed to the chair. It is apparent to me that we're going to have a substantial number of questions. If we were to adjourn at 11:30, that only gives us 10 minutes. And it's been my experience that the longer we go, the less active our minds go. And so I would throw out as a suggestion that, as I understand it, we can close the public hearing and nevertheless, when we have the next meeting, because we're, we have to have a next meeting because the council has to act on April 5th before we can reach a final determination, that at that time, we will still be able to question the applicant, notwithstanding that the public hearing is closed. That is based on the advice of council, which we obtained. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I mean, we could do this for the next 10 minutes, but I don't see any great virtue in that. And we've heard a lot of testimony tonight, which I would like to take into consideration and look further into it so we can focus our questioning rather than be scattershot. So I just throw out to my fellow commissioners the thought of perhaps at this time, continuing the motion to a date certain.
That's what I was going to say, to a date certain. You'll need to pick.
Vice Chair Kane?
I'll second that motion.
All right. I will call the question. All in favor, ayes. Passes unanimously.
Now we need a date certain.
Now you need a date certain.
All right. Let's pick a date certain.
Oh, why not?
April 20th.
April 20th.
April 20th.
Could I just check?
Commissioner Hudes, is that something that might work for you?
No, I only have the scheduled dates available. I will not be available. I'll be in Japan on the 20th.
Do you have other dates you might be available?
I won't be here either, the 20th.
All right. I'm going to suggest we pick a different date.
What's the last one in April?
It's a Plan Cal day.
We have 20, the 27th is a regular Planning Commission day, as you say, right?
Right there. 27, it's a Plan Cal day.
Question, of course, and we direct this to staff. We must already have agenda items. Is that right?
If the audience could please hold it down just a bit. We're still trying to wrap up the business with the date.
What's the agenda like on the 27th?
The agenda on the 27th has a number of continued items that may be continued again. Those are the Highlands thoughts.
Perhaps we should poll and see if everybody's going to be here. I'm looking at my calendar. I will be here on the 27th, but that doesn't mean anybody else will.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I will.
Commissioner Erickson?
Well, I'm at a bit of disadvantage because I couldn't hear the conversation that went on about what dates people weren't available. So my question was going to be about the 13th.
The 13th is fairly.
Of the staff, which is the next regularly scheduled meeting of the planning.
Booked.
The 13th has a number of items already currently on it.
That have already been noticed.
Is the 27th the problem for the commissioner?
No, I just, no, I just didn't know why we were ruling out the 13th.
Probably because it's a Friday.
I'm going to.
No, it's not.
I, we're all, well, I'm sure we'll have a core. I'll be here on the 13th. I thought perhaps if we move it to the 27th, it will be less disrupting to our agenda since the 13th is so close, but I'm, I'm available.
I'll second that motion as well.
Does that work for staff? What was the date?
27th.
All right. I will call the question then. I'll, I'm sorry. Commissioner Erickson, did you have a question?
I just want to be, I want to be sure everybody that's here tonight can be here on the 27th.
Yes.
Okay.
I will call the question. All in favor?
We didn't, who made, who made the motion to put, continue to the 27th in the second? Okay.
All right. Mr. Paulson, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do not have a report this evening. Thank you.
All right. Do any members of the commission have an issue to bring to the attention of the commission? Before you go, people, I want to thank you all for your attendance this evening. We really encourage the public participation. Thank you so much. You make this community a wonderful place to be. Thank you. And thank you, commissioners and staff for your hard work as well. This meeting is adjourned.